Good evening. Welcome to the May 5, 2021, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present tonight, and we start out tonight with our public hearings, of which I believe we have five tonight. The first one is a zoning application for approximately 17.25 acres located along the north side of Ashers Fork Drive to be rezoned from CF to RS6. O'Brien Lloyd, LLC, is the applicant. Good evening, Ms. Rush. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The subject property consists of 17.25 acres and is a portion of parcel 14 on tax map 114. It is located along the north side of Ashers Fork Drive in east of Cayson Lane. The property is contiguous to the north of the Waits Creek Crossing subdivision, and it has Spence Creek that divides it and traverses the property from the northeast down to the westerly side of the property. The property is currently vacant, and the owners were interested in changing the rezoning from CF, a commercial fringe zoning district, to RS6, which is single-family residential, 6,000-square-foot lot size minimum. These would be detached houses, and it would be consistent with some of the other housing that's in the neighborhood to the south that's zoned RSA1, those are zero-lot-line single-family residences. The adjacent zoning to the west is planned commercial district and is developed with the Creekside at Three Rivers Assisted Living Nursing Home, and to the east is unincorporated land in Rutherford County zoned RM, which is single-family residential large lot size. The future land use map of the Murfreesboro 2035 Comprehensive Plan indicates that neighborhood commercial is the most appropriate land use designation for this property. When we had developed the map several years ago, it was consistent with what was zoned for this property. However, due to the location of Spence Creek, it makes it very difficult to develop with commercial, so the owner is requesting residential to be developed on the south part of the creek and that the remainder of the parcel stay at CF, commercial, along the New Salem Highway portion of it. Staff supports the request from CF to RS6 for the following reasons: The proposed RS6 zone would be developed with single-family detached residence, which would be compatible with the surrounding residential land uses. The northern portion of the subject property fronting along New Salem will remain the commercially zoned CF, and Spence Creek divides the property from east to west, which results in challenges for developing commercial along the southern half of this parcel due to the crossing of the creek. Staff is asking that the Planning Commission discuss this matter and then formulate a recommendation to the City Council. The applicant is here and available for the Planning Commission to answer any questions about this request as well. Thank you. I'll take any questions from the Commission.
Thank you. Anybody have questions, Ms. Rush, before we start the public hearings?
Okay.
Okay, so we will begin tonight. If you have anybody here that would like to come forward and speak on this request, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and then any comments you have. You'll need to keep those to three minutes or less, and please make all of your comments directly to the Planning Commission and not to other members of the audience or the developers. So, anyone would like to speak on this item? Please come forward. We'll open the public hearing. This is for the zoning application for the property on Ashers Fork Drive, the one we just discussed, just that one. Yes. Anybody at all? Okay, we'll close the public hearing and ask for comments or questions from the Planning Commission.
If no comments, I'll make a motion. We approve the application subject to all staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Our next item, item B, is a zoning application for approximately 78 acres located along Medical Center Parkway, Robert Rose Drive, Wilkinson Pike, and Willow Oak Trail to be rezoned from MU, GDO1 and GDO2 to PUD, CH, GDO1 and GDO2. Clary Park is the development, and Heinz Acquisitions LLC is the applicant. Ms. Green, good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Our application, our second public hearing this evening, is for you to consider a zoning request for properties located south of Wilkinson Pike, north of Medical Center Parkway, along Willow Oak Trail, Robert Rose Drive, and Gresham Park Drive. The subject area is shaded in red and blue on the map that you have on your screen, and it shows the areas being requested to be rezoned. The property consists of 77.8 acres. It's currently zoned mixed-use district MU and GDO1 and GDO2. The properties to the north of this are in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County or mostly developed single-family lots. To the northeast is the Stones River Battlefield. Properties to the south are the avenues, the city's conference center, and various developments. The request you have before you tonight is similar but different to a request that was received last year, and I'm pointing that out because the zoning ordinance says that an application that has been denied at City Council such as this must wait 18 months before coming back. It's the Development Services Director and the Planning Director's opinion that this application is sufficiently different from the one last year that was rejected by Council to exempt it from that 18-month requirement. The staff asked that the Planning Commission concur and, in the alternative, authorize the City Council to consider the plan and then, of course, to make that determination later. In December of 2013, the City of Murfreesboro initiated the rezoning of these properties from Office General and Single Family Residential District to the newly-created mixed-use district. There was also a rezoning request made by the applicants to remove a portion of the Wilkinson Pike buffer. That's a 100-foot-wide buffer along the south side of Wilkinson Pike to this property. As a good-faith effort, the applicants also committed to constructing a landscape buffer and berm along Wilkinson Pike, and that became a subject of discussion with the previous application. Staff discussed with the property owner, who, of course, is different than the applicant, and they've moved forward on the construction of that berm. It's not finished, of course. I think if you've gone out there, you may see some earthwork have happened, but it is required to be landscaped and irrigated as well. But I thought you might like to know that they have actually begun work on that berm that I think they should have done several years ago. The mixed-use district is a district that permits various types of commercial office and institutional uses and incorporates some multifamily. After a few years after the creation of the mixed-use district, our City Council became concerned with the amount of apartments that were being built in the mixed-use district, so asked staff to look at crafting some language in the zoning ordinance that would limit the area that could be multifamily uses. Just as some background information, the GDO, and so Properties Zone GDO, currently have about 2,806 apartment units available or under construction. 1,578 of those units are on the east side of I-24, and then the remaining are on the west side. And so, the restriction that we have is that developments of this size cannot constitute more than 25% of the developable land to multifamily, and, of course, our density in this area is 25 dwelling units per acre. I'll give you some differences between this plan and the previous plan because I think it's important to understand what's changed. I did want to note, my staff report, I've got a number wrong that was a whole over from before. I mentioned that in the apartments, they were going to have some first-floor commercial, and I said it would be 8,000 square feet, but this book says that Area 5 would have a minimum of 4,000 square feet and Area 7, a minimum of 2,500 square feet, which is 7,500 square feet, but it could go up to 10,000 square feet. So, that number's a little different. I just wanted to point it out to you. I'm sorry for making that error. The Clary Park PUD proposes approximately 39% of the land for commercial purposes, 30% for townhomes and single-family detached, and 25% for apartments. Since their initial submittal of this revised plan, they've revised it a couple times to bring the number of apartments down from what they had previously requested to a number which would be permitted today, so 488 apartment units. They're proposing that to be their maximum number of apartment units here now, and that would be allowed under the current mixed-use zoning. What is not permitted under the current mixed-use zoning is single-family detached or townhomes. And so, the reason this application is coming to you is two parts: A PUD, planned unit district, and a CH or commercial highway zoning is essentially to allow the townhome and single-family detached type style of housing, since it's not permitted in the mixed-use zoning district. The areas that were going to be primarily commercial out parcels, they left zoned as CH. Staff's opinion, bulk zoning is easier to manage, regulate, and minister through the years than planned developments, and since we knew they were going to do along Medical Center Parkway traditional commercial out parcels, we suggested maintaining a commercial zone. At staff's suggestion, rather than leaving them zoned mixed-use, they're changing them to commercial highway as a good-faith effort because mixed-use would allow by right apartments, and we didn't want there to be confusion later, and we wanted their intentions to be clear that, yes, this is going to remain strictly commercial. And the PUD would be mixture of commercial, multifamily, single-family detached, and single-family attached. So, the -- I've made several charts. I have just a little chart that shows the differences in the plans from 2020 to 2021. In 2020, there were 600 apartments, and today they're proposing 488, so that's a reduction of 112 units. In 2020 plan, they were proposing 290 townhomes, and today it's 182. In the 2020 plan, there were no single-family detached lots, and today they're proposing 38 single-family detached lots. And so, the total number of units in the previous plan was 890, today it's 708 residential units. Some of the acreage got rearranged as well, so they've changed the sizes of some of the areas. If you've looked at the concept plan, you can see that they've identified seven areas and also included a phasing plan for any work for the future development of that and the work proposed in the public rights of way. The commercial portions of the plan are unknown at this time, therefore, the application to rezone them to CH seems appropriate. They are staying in the GDO as well, so that's not being taken off of those CH properties in the planned development. I just want to make that clear that that process that we're so familiar with and those standards will apply to development in this area. We, of course, knew before this development, knew with the previous application and with the current application that there would be some concerns from residents with development of property here, and some of those concerns we hear are specifically regarding traffic or transportation and drainage concerns. The property, of course, is on Medical Center Parkway, which is on our major transportation plan to add two more lanes, and I think if you've been on this portion of Medical Center Parkway, you've noticed that in the last 10 years it has changed. Wilkinson Pike is on the major transportation plan as well. Before this application came to us last year, the city identified a need to improve Wilkinson Pike. Regardless of what happens here, we know that that exists, and adopted a major transportation plan, which, of course, includes improvements to Wilkinson Pike. We do have preliminary plans for those that are, you know, we like to give you numbers, but they're designed in about a 60% design, so they're not final plans, but we do have an idea of what will happen in Wilkinson Pike. The project isn't funded for construction yet, and the city, of course, adopts a capital, a CIP plan, I don't want to get the acronym wrong, where we have the entire city of Murfreesboro, the entire roadway network that we have to identify, and there are lots of roads that need improvements. And one of the hard jobs of our administration council and our city engineers to kind of, we only have so much money, we only have so many taxpayers, where we spend that money, and so far, we don't have Wilkinson Pike identified, I would say, in the next five years. And so, for me, that's a reasonable, I use that five-year plan as kind of like a guide. I've heard, you know, that priorities can change, and then that may be the case, but I just did want to tell you that we don't have any improvements there. But when we have development come and we know that we have opportunities on these streets to make improvements and have that be put back on the developer as opposed to the taxpayers, we do ask them to hire a third-party engineer company for their traffic study, and there is one. We've had them modify that so that it reflects the current design, and that traffic study, of course, makes recommendations to what roadway improvements or signal modifications may be needed as a result of the extra people for this development. I think that we all know that this property will develop, so that it will develop in some form or fashion. The opportunity to have kind of a master plan here is a positive for us, and to identify those roadway improvements and timing for them. Instead of doing it like in a piecemeal fashion, a lot here, a lot there, we saw this planned development as an opportunity to look at those improvements recommended by the transportation study and maybe ask them to do a few extra things than were in there that we think can help. Mostly, so when we look at development, if we know we're going to build the road next year, we don't ask them to build the improvements because we don't want them to spend, you know, $300,000 to us rip it up and rebuild it. We ask them to give us the money, and as we build that road, it'll help pay for what they should have done. But if we don't have a, like, we know we're going to build this in two years or three years, and we know that the development would have some sort of impact on our road system, we ask them to go ahead, rather than just giving the city money, make some improvements so that it can manage the traffic today. So, that's what we've done with this application because we don't know that Wilkinson Pike is going to be constructed in the next two, three, four years. We've asked them to construct turn lanes at both roads, turn lanes into their development, make signal modifications, add additional turn lanes at the signals, and various types of improvements. There is a sheet in our program book that goes through them, and I think Mr. Taylor probably will go through them as well. So, that's how we addressed the challenges we have on this property. We know development's coming here. We know it's going to develop. What it looks like, we have a say in, I mean, we is you, and then how it happens, of course, we have a say in. And then, I know that some people have asked me as far as drainage, you know, there are more houses, more rooftops, more driveways, and, you know, water doesn't percolate through rooftops or driveways, or it shouldn't. And so, are we going to make what is sometimes a challenging situation, this area, worse? Are we going to allow this development just to take the water that that land normally receives, retains, releases, and just push it off on the battlefield or push it off on the neighbors? And the City of Murfreesboro doesn't allow that for any new development, and we're certainly not going to allow it today. The specific technical plans, of course, come later if this entitlement is even granted. And so, what we require is that developments cannot release more water at a quicker rate post-development than pre-development. So, how the land currently is now, there's, you know, 78 acres of a lot of grass that can filter water. They can't just push it on their neighbors, and so they'll have to manage the stormwater and water. So, even when it comes off those impervious areas, it's got to go somewhere. Typically, we see retention or detention ponds in this area, of course, has a large one. When land costs more, we see more creative ways to manage this. So, we see permeable pavers, which you've seen several times in the gateway, and sometimes you can build a parking lot up and store that water under the parking lot and slowly discharge it and let it filter into the soil, which is really the best filter. And then, so we have several of those developments that utilize those techniques. There are also units and other things you can do, but we will, of course, make that a priority and will not allow that to happen. There are some exceptions that have been requested with the planned development. Let me see if I can get them, as you can with many planned developments. Unlike our conversation before, a lot of them aren't architecture-related. They've come around a bit with the architecture, and so I think that, you don't hear me talking about that a lot because they've come around. The exceptions would be to allow single-family attached and single-family detached as a permitted use. Those are not allowed now. It's one of them, but to identify that. And then, to allow the porches to go into the front setbacks, which we think is appropriate because it allows that kind of walkable community. Allow the sales of food and beverages and park spaces. And so, they're proposing to have a large outdoor gathering space, and they'd like to have something like the city has, like Food Truck Fridays, where they can invite those food trucks there. Of course, we don't want it to be something that would be not well-thought-out, and so we'll look for those plans later at site plan. And then, let's see here, there's a parking exception they'd like, so they'd like to, the requirement now for one-bedroom apartments is that you require 1.5 parking spaces for each one bedroom, and they'd like to do 1.1 per bedroom. And 1.1 per bedroom is what we allow for two units and above. In the past, the Planning Commission's been comfortable with, if there's a master plan, well-thought-out development that does provide parking throughout the development, not just far away where people aren't really going to use it, have been open to considering those exceptions to parking because our parking standards are pretty high. I think, especially when I first started, we had a lot of problems around the university, so you would have a unit rented to four students, and those four students might have partners who come over, and so then there are eight cars, and they were parking in other people's driveways, and trash wasn't getting picked up, and so the development wasn't accommodating itself. So, Murfreesboro's parking standard's a little bit higher than other people's, but for good reason because we've noticed that we've had challenges near our university. Those challenges really aren't as present the further you get from the university, particularly the further out of that pricing or demographics. So, I think that in the past, Planning Commission has considered those parking, a similar-type parking exception because it is not a student housing, and we think that the risk is pretty low there, and we understand that our parking standards are pretty high. So, the planning staff is generally supportive of this rezoning request for the following reasons: The proposed land uses will be compatible with the surrounding land uses and will create a balance of mixed uses with strong management regime. The proposed development would contribute to the vitality of the area by adding homeownership options with the Gateway Design Overlay District. Development quality is generally in conformance with the GDO standards of the Murfreesboro zoning ordinance as well as with those of the Murfreesboro Design Guidelines. And the request is consistent with the future land use map. We think it's a positive that, similar to the avenues, that they'll have an overall management regime that should filter out quality before it even gets to planning staff. My voice, I have a respiratory infection, but I promise it's not COVID. I got tested because I'm making decisions that, you know, my coworkers are important, the people here are important. I wouldn't want to intentionally expose them. I know people might hear me cough or hear me talk and be worried, but I did want to say, just several times, I got tested, and I just don't want to add that risk, and certainly I'm getting vaccinated, so I care about you all. I know it sounds scary, though, so. At this time, if you have no questions for me, but you might, Mr. Matt Taylor would like to come up as well to present the request.
Yes, one question. Mark, what did you say the square footage was lowered on on the first floor, the multifamily?
Sure. So, Areas 5 and 7 are the apartments and the developments, and we wanted them to include commercial space in those apartments, so this area and this area. And so, in the previous version of the plan, they committed to having 8,000 square feet of commercial area on the first floor in those apartments. And I assumed, I think, or maybe just didn't check my work good enough, that the number was the same, but today, their plan says that Area 5 will have a minimum of 4,000 square feet and Area 7, a minimum of 2,500 square feet of commercial space.
Were those supposed to be 8,000 each before, 8,000 total?
Total. It was four and four, with a maximum of 10,000. So, there's a minimum and a maximum.
Then, I got a question for you, too. I just want to make sure I understood something you said also, that if the zoning remained the same, meaning mixed use, that by right they would have the ability to put 288 apartment units on this property irrespective of this plan. Is that what I heard you say?
By right, they would be able to put 488. What they could not do are the additional 182 townhomes and 38 single-family, but the apartment number has come down.
Any other questions before we hear from Mr. Taylor?
Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Thank you, Ms. Green. I feel bad for having our talk tonight. So, Matt Taylor of SEC, and I'm accompanied tonight by Mr. Walt O'Shea from Heinz, the applicant on the project, as well as Mr. Kevin Gunther from Reagan Smith, land planner, landscape architect on the project, and then Mr. Tommy Smith representing the landowner on the project. So, as Ms. Green said, we are here tonight to request rezoning to a PUD for Clary Park. I think that each of you are familiar with Clary Park, maybe in different roles last time that it came through Planning Commission, but we've spent, you know, that came through in 2020, recommended approval by Planning Commission, hit a little snag at City Council. So, we have spent the last six months working very hard to try to incorporate changes to make that more acceptable. And so, Ms. Green did a good job running through those changes, but I did want to go through and reiterate those. First and foremost, we greatly reduced the multifamily dwelling count inside of our development. As Ms. Green said, it was 600 in the previous application, and now we have two clear options inside of this book. One of those would reduce that number by over 50% to 280, the other by about 20% down to the 488. We also greatly reduced the number of single-family attached homes. Previously, it was up at 290. We've reduced that by nearly 40%, down to 182. And then, we completely introduced a new housing type with the detached, single-family home. That sounded like that was very important to staff, the community, the public bodies, and so we're excited we could work that into the plan in an acceptable way. And then, obviously, the single-family attached architecture was a huge component of conversation and critique last time. We spent a lot of time up front with staff redesigning, rethinking those, and we think we made a lot of strides, have a superior product. I think that staff agrees with that based on the lack of conversation on that during Margaret Ann's introduction. And then, I don't think it was as much of a conversation at Planning Commission, but it was at Council on the lack of progress on the berm. So, we have spent much of the last six months re-permitting that berm, and then we pulled that permit about three to four weeks ago, and I believe they finished up the grading activities this week, and so we're in the process of mobilizing a landscape company to come out and install the trees and shrubs and the other vegetation that's necessary to finish that vision. So, obviously, along with the density reduction comes reduction in traffic, so depending on what type of time of day you're counting out there, we've reduced our generation numbers by between about 7 to 18% by our projections. We have continued to work with staff very closely in the transportation and public works to address their concerns on traffic. So, we continue to have our commitment to installing the turn lanes along Medical Center Parkway, which is a huge component of our transportation plan along Medical Center. We are also going to install turn lanes at Willow Oak on Wilkinson and then on Wilkinson at West Park, and so all of those will go in in our first phase. Matter of fact, those two on Wilkinson would go in this fall before the rest of our phases actually got out of the ground, so they'd be installed day one, not on the tail end of the project. We also worked very closely with staff to develop a workable drainage plan that not only protects Wilkinson Pike from overtopping at this location, it protects the downstream residents. We've also been in contact with County Public Works to discuss, you know, some possible maintenance of the system downstream of where we see the issue. And so, Public Works has actually made a visit within the last few weeks. They need to go back and do some more surveying to see how far they have to go, but they told me yesterday that they did have that on their radar, and we're actively moving toward, hopefully, making some improvements in that drainage system downstream. So, we're encouraged by that. We think all these changes make our project substantially different. We think it makes it a superior project than to what came through in 2020, and we hope that you agree. So, I think that each of you are familiar. It's about a 78-acre piece. It's kind of boxed in by Medical Center, Robert Rose, Wilkinson Pike, and Gresham Park Drive. In general, it wants to flow from Medical Center toward Wilkinson or from Medical Center toward Robert Rose. As Ms. Green said, it is zoned mixed-use today, and so I think you'll see that our land use plan is very consistent with the mixed-use vision. As Ms. Green said, it's really about the single-family attached and detached is why we're here with the PUD. we're here with the PUD. We're not asking for any extra density on the apartments or any other real exceptions here. And then again, as Ms. Green said, it is compliant with the future land use map. The only difference is really that we're, our densities are much lower than what that future land use map recommends. The proposed plan is a mixture between PUD and commercial highway, as Ms. Green said. The PUD would be for more of the residential component, whereas the commercial highway is for all the future commercial out parcels. Those two zoning combinations lets us provide a mixture of uses on this 78 acres. We have broken that up into two options that we'll go over with in a minute. We continue to be committed to doing the things that make the gateway special in this project, underground utilities, street trees, decorative lighting. We do that while maintaining the mixture of detached and attached as well as some multifamily, a multitude of commercial. And then, we will have an owners association that manages the entire project. We will have a master architect, very similar to what the avenue had, that every project will have to get approved before it's submitted to the city. I think that worked well for staff and planning commission and has produced a very good project across the street at the avenue over the last 15 years and we want to bring that across the street and continue that same pattern on Clary Park. So option A, this is the only option that could be built for the next three years after zoning approval. It consists of 38 single family detached homes, 182 single family attached homes, 280 multifamily dwellings and about 38 acres of commercial. This is that plan. You can see, you know, it focuses residential detached along Wilkinson Pike to try to be respective of the neighbors across the street as well as the battlefield. It then moves back into the single family attached as you get back closer to the Willow Oak Trail and then we reintroduce some single family detached and attached on the other side of Willow Oak. Then our multifamily is along Robert Rose Drive directly across from Henley Station. And then our commercial highway is scattered from west to east, all the way from Gresham Park, all the way back over to Robert Rose Drive. This plan, the main difference, that changes between option A and option B is in area seven, which is in the lower right hand corner here. Option A is commercial and office, so that's the only thing that could be built in that area. We'll be pursuing office tenants. Heinz has a very lengthy resume or background in landing, commercial and office users, so we're very hopeful that that eight and a half acres will be an office user over the next few years. If that's the case, then 280 multifamily units is all that this property would ever Option B, if we cannot find that successful tenant, then it would allow area seven to build an additional 208 multifamily dwellings, which will bring that total to 488, which is exactly what the property is entitled for today and no more. And so again, the plans are identical except for area seven, the area in red, where that goes to a multifamily dwelling after that three year period is up. Some more specifics, the detached again is inside of these two highlighted red areas. So phase one of the detached will be built up along Wilkinson Pike at Gresham Park. These are an alley loaded, single family home. They're all two car garages, so these would face Wilkinson Pike or Gresham or a small internal park area. The second pod would be at the intersection of Willow Oak and Robert Rose and again, the front would face those two public streets with alley on the backside. So we think those are set up to create a very nice streetscape along either our existing roads or our potential future roads of Willow Oak. These will all be, we anticipate these to be two story homes. We've set a maximum height in here of 35 feet, which is consistent with the surrounding residential, a minimum of 1,800 square feet of heated living area. Again, I think that the raised porches and foundations were a big part of the conversation last year. We have committed to meeting that gateway standard with this application. These will be set up on an HPR, horizontal property regime to be sold that allow all the exterior maintenance and yard work to be maintained through the HOA, so a very consistent, clean, high end look. And then the setbacks, we'll have front setbacks of 15 feet, side of 10 feet, which is more of a separation to the adjoining building, just like all of our projects, and then 20 feet from the garage to the alley, which would allow a car to be parked behind the garage and not block the street. So, we spent a lot of time on architecture, obviously materials is a big component of that, so we've committed, not only on the detached, but you'll see this throughout all of the aspects of this project, heavy reliance on brick and stone. We have cut back on the reliance on the cement board siding to be accents only and then the vinyl will only be in trim and soffit areas. So obviously, the single family attached architecture took a lot of conversation last time and so, starting out, we sat down with staff, went through a little design charrette, got feedback, what they like, what they don't like. Some consistent themes we heard was that West Haven and Berry Farms over in Franklin were very appealing. They felt like that would be attractive and appropriate here and so my client spent a day or two over there figuring out what works, what does not work, and then come back and use that to develop his own unique product. And so I think you'll see there's a lot of detail, a heavy reliance on masonry, a lot of stacked porches and then when they're not stacked, they are functional porches, all of which were talked extensively about last time. And then we tried to take that same architecture over to the single family attached as well. So we've got two, again, two pods of the single family attached. One of those would front on Willow Oak in the future, create a nice streetscape there and the other would be located behind the single family detached on the east side or south side of Willow Oak. And again, a consistent building height, minimum 1,400 square feet in heated living space, again, raised foundations. These would again be an HPR, that HPR is not getting set up for rental. We have specifically excluded ourselves from being able to sell to a mass rental company, so these are set up to be sold to individuals. And the setbacks here are identical to what the single family detached setbacks are. Same building materials and I think you'll see the architecture is very cohesive, very complimentary of the detached. These look like five individual homes in one building instead of one big building. It's got five individual entrances, very little cementitious siding. We've went way away from that farmhouse look in the past application, a far superior product in our opinion. And same thing on the single, on the three dwelling units. You can see one of the wrap porches in this as an example. Multifamily is generally in the same area, just a lot less density. We did not change the architecture, that seemed to be received well by staff last time, so we stuck with the four story buildings, the ground floor office that Ms. Green mentioned earlier. And I will say, the square footage there, it went down proportionately with the unit count, so obviously those buildings are going to get smaller, so we just reduced, that's the reason for the reduction in that office area. Will still have interior and exterior amenities in the, both of these, still have garages around the site and then setbacks are the exact same as the residential attached and detached. The materials are very consistent, just changing out cementitious siding to cementitious panels. And again, as Ms. Green said, this will, along with everything else on this property, go through the full GDO review process. We've seen the results of that, it produces a good product, so we're not requesting any exceptions to that. Of course, this will set the standard for that, a lot of variation in roofline, variation in building material, very lot, variation in building planes, so very attractive building. Along with the attractive architecture, we're trying to create unique places in our development. So, spent a lot of time and thought on this grand lawn concept. Think this would be a lot of energy and activity at this. This is where our residents will become community. They'll get to know each other at this location, so we're very excited about how this could turn out. Commercial areas, as I said, it runs from Gresham Park all the way over to Robert Rose. We have placed extra restrictions on some of those, specifically along the areas closer to Wilkinson Pike, so it's more sensitive to the neighbors there, more sensitive to the battlefield. And then obviously, as you get back to Medical Center Parkway, those become a little more intense use while still being regulated by the GDO. And then we based our uses on commercial highway here, but we took out some of the more undesirable type uses and a full list of what those uses are is inside of your booklet. Same building materials. Now these are some examples, you've seen these, you've helped produce some of these in, in the community. These are some examples of what Heinz has done and would like to construct here. So again, not only architecture, we want to create these unique places, so we're extending that grand lawn concept from the commercial, from the multifamily into the commercial. We think this is going to be a great area for several restaurants, a high activity center. I would make this akin to kind of the center part of the avenue. This is where you have your food trucks, your speakers, your music, you know, you want people to hang out here and create that atmosphere, so this, we feel like this area has a lot of potential for that. Amenities, we think first and foremost that the site itself is the amenity. We've got, you know, we've got the Goat to the west, we've got the Battlefield to the north, we've got Jonathan's to the west and we've got the Full Avenue Shopping Center to the south. And so, we think that people that want to live here are going to be attracted for that, but you also have to make a great project and so we've got internal amenities planned. We start that by completing the seat walls at the signalized intersection. I think, excited to see, I think that'd be the first intersections that have seen that full streetscape master plan come to fruition. Of course, pools are always very attractive to residents, so we got, it'd be, it'd be two or three pools here. Obviously, if area seven becomes an office building, we would not construct that pool there. Each of these would have its own unique design, but be located in each of those respective areas. Again, we think these lawn concepts will be a great amenity on the eastern side of the site and as you move west and north to the ownership and the attached and detached, they will have their own separate amenities that are going to be these outdoor fire pits and gathering areas along their walking trails. You know, that's where these people are going to become friends, some special areas there, we think. And of course, all of that connected by this great pedestrian connection system that is fully complemented by this green way like trail that parallels Clary Lane, gets extended up through the townhouse area over to Willow Oak, or sorry, Wilkinson Pike, where I believe that will have a multipurpose trail at some point in the future and be able to connect into that. In access, we think that this really rounds out the roadway system in this area, obviously with the, providing some interconnectivity, the construction of these turn lanes, the additional right turn lane on Medical Center would have, you know, it's a couple or a few thousand linear feet to help complete that system. That's been one of the most important things along Medical Center the last few years. And then, of course, these turn lanes at Willow Oak and West Park that we think will help the operation of both of those intersections immediately, since those will be done early in the process. And of course, completing the fourth leg of the intersections, those signals that go into the avenue today and the completion of Willow Oak, that will take some pressure off of Gresham Park until the Wilkinson Pike does get extended at some point over to Conference Center. So, we think that that will help the operations there. And as Ms. Green said, one unique thing about this is you've got firm commitments on when each of these are going to be done inside the book, whether that's with a phase of construction or a completion date on some of those items if it is not completed by a phase. And so, we did host a neighborhood meeting, I think that was on about six to eight weeks ago. I think we had about 20 to 25 people show up. We felt like it was fairly well received, had some good dialogue. We felt like residents were appreciative of the single family detached along Wilkinson Pike, even had some dialogue about wanting us to pursue specific commercial tenants such as grocery stores, so we couldn't agree more with that. So we walked away from that meeting very encouraged, I'd say. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the public hearing.
Okay, questions for Mr. Taylor now? Go ahead, Sean.
Mr. Taylor, you mentioned on the single family attached about rental restrictions to large corporations. What about overall rental restrictions? That way, somebody can't buy it personally, then sell it to the, the big corporation one tenant down. Is there any thought about just doing an overall rental restriction?
So, we, we have not, we've not done a restriction against individuals just because sometimes they might get in a bind, you know, if they, somebody falls ill, they need to do that. We just don't, we're just, we don't want to sell to one big conglomerate and it turn into a rental, that's not what we're looking for and so, we have not looked at that. You know, we traditionally try to preserve some flexibility for the individual owners themselves.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. I'm sure we'll have more for you after the public hearing. So at this time, we will open the public hearing on this item and ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak regarding the Clary Park application. Again, come to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes to speak and please make all your comments directly to the planning commission. The public hearing is now open. Anyone would like to speak?
Good evening, planning commission. My name's Adam Seaborn, I live at 2726 Crosswoods Drive. Was here during the last public hearing where we spoke, you know, in depth about the staff's concerns with the project. I think a lot of those have been addressed, so I appreciate the staff's commitment to bring a quality project to you guys. The one thing that I think we all agree on is traffic's still an issue. Traffic will be an issue, particularly given the fact that we would be adding somewhere in the neighborhood of maybe 1,000 to 1,700 cars to this area. I did read through the traffic study, I'm sure you guys have as well. I know Mr. Taylor had mentioned that could develop to 488. I think the traffic study right now is considering 280, so that's a, something to consider as far as, you know, the numbers that they're presenting in that traffic study as well. There's also concerns with the, you know, the outlets that that's being proposed to go over to Medical Center Parkway. Obviously, people when they're driving are going to take the path of least resistance, that's Wilkinson. Most people don't want to sit through, what, nine traffic lights as they go through, you know, down that way. So even the idea of cutting down Medical Center and then cutting over to Wilkinson, that's still going to be there and it may actually encourage people to do that a little bit more because there'll be one more outlet to Wilkinson to get around that to some degree. I did drive out today about 5:30 just to get an idea of, you know, I know we're starting to exit some of the COVID activity, starting to get a little bit more traffic flow, a little bit more normal side. Just to give you an idea of what it looked like today at about 5:25 PM, it was backed up almost to Van Cleve and that's current. So just something to consider as we get through this. I know you guys have control over some of the CIP projects with Wilkinson, some of the ways, council members in particular, some of the, some of the side as well as the Medical Center. T-DOT, I know, I think Thompson Lane is a state highway, so that there would be some collaboration there with the state to get that done, but some of that needs to be considered as part of this. Also, the rental restriction, I think Councilman Wright brought up, that is a concern in the neighborhoods in particular. I know that there is restrictions in place for individual, or selling to a company, but the individuals could then turn around and sell it as well. I think that's a good point that we need to consider. The drainage issue, it's, you know, I know Ms. Green has talked about that we can't, the developers can't pump more water out than was originally. I know there's been quite a bit of drainage issues on Wilkinson. It seemed to have gotten worse since Trust Point was developed. I know that was elevated, I know there was some drainage put in, but it looks like swiss cheese right now if you drive down Wilkinson, it's pretty, pretty bad and I know you guys have seen that. So ask you to consider, you know, I think Mayor McFarland said at the podcast that I listened to, you, you, you guys have done a lot of good things Murphysboro, no doubt, but there's been some challenges in traffic development and development in particular with traffic flow's been one of them. We can't really undo that at this point, traffic is bad in that area, but hopefully we can learn from it and, and start to improve it before or in conjunction with development projects. I think the CIP budget could, could be best used at that, at that point for that side. So, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next?
Good evening, I'm Deborah Gray and I live at 2660 Cross Park Drive. I'm going to sound like a repeat. I'm going to sound like a repeat. I do have three concerns. The first one is, of course, the units. I think the area is zoned now for about 550 units. If Area 7 were zoned CH, that would really ensure the neighborhood that that is, those other 200 units are not going to be built, and it would, it would be within the current zoning at that point. So I'm all for option A. My second concern is traffic. Wilkinson Pike is a direct path also to the hospital emergency room, and it offers a lot less traffic lights to navigate. When Wilkinson is backed up and an emergency vehicle is trying to get through, traffic literally has nowhere to go. I understand that funding is made, has been made available to make Wilkinson Pike at some point a three-lane highway, which will obviously alleviate that problem. But when, I understand too, that that was in the five-year plan, it has been delayed. So I beg the question, will it be delayed again? I actually am for expanding Wilkinson Pike to three lanes now rather than later. And even though it may not be in the budget, I'm asking that other things be put aside if for no other reason for the public safety aspect. When Willow Oak is going to be expanded to the Medical Center Parkway, a portion, it's, it's been stated that a portion of the traffic will be diverted from Wilkinson Pike. While this is partially true, I feel like it's to a very small degree because, again, a left turn is not the path of least resistance. And even in the traffic study that's attached to the plan, in the evening, 36 vehicles turned from Wilkinson Pike onto Willow Oak while 521 vehicles continued onto Wilkinson Pike. So there might be a few more turning on Willow Oak, but I don't think it's going to be the same percentage. Water is the third concern. We had a heavy rain March the 26th through the night of March the 27th. I think it was about seven inches of rain. The next morning, it was still flowing like a river over Wilkinson Pike near the back of the battleground. This problem was created, it was never there before, but it was created at some point after Trust Point was built. So it seems to me that the water problem in building Trust Point just moved it on down the road. That's not, that's not a fix. And even though there's three really good-sized ponds on the development, I can, I know a pond that's within one mile of the property that will not hold water. So it doesn't give me a whole lot of confidence that the three ponds that are planned would hold water. Thank you. Thank you for your service to the community as well.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Evening, members. Let me set my timer because I want to certainly stay on your schedule. My name is Steve Smith. I live at 2119 Wilkinson Pike. I think that's one of the seven properties that are still in the RS15 history. I've lived there since 2012. I've been in Murfreesboro since graduating from MTSU in 1979. I certainly can agree with what Ms. Green said, this is going to be developed. But I believe that the issue, I want to follow up in what the lady before me said, most importantly, I think there needs to be some diligent consideration over the safety factors, and that being primarily the traffic right now. I know that there have been plans discussed regarding the improvements on Wilkinson Pike, but let me give you some personal testimony from 2020 and the COVID pandemic and working from home and being able to watch out my front window and see the, the traffic flow on Wilkinson. I assure you that as I stand here this evening, Wilkinson has been discovered, for lack of a better word, by not only our local emergency services, but those services coming in from outside. Sentient St. Thomas ambulances, Vanderbilt ambulances, and I might add, not just in the emergency medical services area, but the investment this city has made tremendously in your fire department and the amount of equipment that uses that same thoroughfare. Now, we all know and it goes without saying that anyone that's traveled that would understand and realize that all it takes is just a moment for a wheel to drop off where there is no shoulder. And I can attest to you for over the years that I've lived there that many times in the evening, there have been those accidents and daytime hours as well. So I, I think I recall in the last meeting that Mr. Huddleston may have referred to it as a substandard, but although it's not technically substandard. But those that travel it and those that are providing emergency services for our community will tell you that they're attempting to take that street in order to not be in gridlock on Medical Center Parkway. But unfortunately, just as this gentleman mentioned earlier, when I left my home this afternoon, in fact, that traffic, I could not, unless somebody was nice and let me out, I would not have been able to turn left. And I can tell you for traveling that route daily to my job, in the afternoons, when there becomes an accident close to the interstate entrance ramp, those travelers who are coming up Wilkinson Pike to turn left on Gresham Park and then turn right on Medical Center are gridlocked, and therefore it backs up even further back to, to as far as Van Cleve Lane. And also the point that the previous speaker brought up about observing the drainage after the construction of Trust Point and the various flooding incidents that have occurred during the time I've lived there. So I'll conclude by just saying that I know certainly that, that we're in a wonderful, growing city, but sometimes I think the time in which we need to pursue certain projects needs to take very great due diligence in what is a unique situation, I believe, in this case. I thank you for your time. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Who's next?
My name's Adam Dill. Reside 2125 Wilkinson Pike. And just to add to what the previous individuals have noted, let's see, I believe we acquired the property back in, at the end of 2020. And since living there, I've personally witnessed 18-wheelers traveling down Wilkinson Pike and even seeing the, the wires or the, the electrical cables rubbing off the side of the tractor trailers. So that's one area of concern. And then most recently, on Sunday morning, I believe there was an accident at around 5:00 AM during which for probably 30 to 45 minutes, no medical vehicles, or anyone for that matter, would have been able to pass through there due to a tow truck having to block both lanes, making, making them impassable. So that's a concern, especially hearing the number of residents and occupants that would be added to, to the numbers that are already traveling through that area. So thank you for your time and look forward to hearing next steps.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Anybody else?
Good evening.
Welcome.
Chairman Jones, members of the commission. I'm Bill Kettering. I live at 2510 Blanton's Point. And many of my, my neighbors have spoken, but I'm speaking on behalf of, of the neighbors who were unable to come tonight and basically echo the same thing that has already been presented to you. Two biggest concerns is, of course, the traffic. The, as previously stated, the number of vehicles, if you choose option B, will probably multiply that times two. Most homes have at least two vehicles, so you're going to add another 1,500, 1,600 vehicles to Wilkinson Pike because that is the backway, if you will, for all locals. Most locals go on, I'm going to backway, I'm not going Medical Center Parkway. And of course, every afternoon at 5 o'clock, it backs up to Willow, Willow Oak, if not further. To Van Cleve. And as those ambulances come down and cement trucks, construction vehicles not paying attention to the speed limit, which is 30, we have several deer crossings because they're all trying to take refuge in that area and to the park, but they still have that, that natural tendency to go across to where the pond was on the corridor property. So there's numerous animals that, that get hit because going at 50, 55 miles an hour and not sticking with a 30-mile speed limit that has been posted, it, it creates a more dangerous roadway and with, as previously stated, no shoulders. Many times the, as in my yard, the, there is no white line, it's falling into mud ditch in the county, and so you get off the line and you're in the ditch, and that happens quite frequently, just as the other night, night before last. So have a real concern about Willow Oak, about the exit onto Wilkinson Pike from Willow Oak. That's a large amount of traffic. And of course, the people who live at Henley Station right now, they like to peel out right there because you come around a kind of a curve, go up a hill, and there's kind of a bump, you can't, can't really see, there's not a good field of vision, and so there's, they're peeling out, loud noises and et cetera. There was an accident just the other day. The second biggest concern is, of course, the drainage. Last month's event, as talked about a few moments ago, I went down, I walked down from my yard to where it's coming across into the battlefield, and I measured four inches coming across Wilkinson Pike, entering into the battlefield where it gets down to my neighbors and actually spreads out as it fans out three houses down from me and was actually covering the field lines, the septic field lines of my neighbors three doors down, which created some concern. They were afraid their, their septic system was going to fail with water being on top of it. So those are concerns we just ask this commission to pay attention to as it moves forward. It's a beautiful development and, but we have those concerns and just hope that this commission will address those on behalf of the folks who live out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you being here. Who else would like to speak? Anybody else? Okay, then we will close the public hearing. And ask for comments and questions from the planning commission.
I guess I'll start.
Go ahead.
We'll get, I'll buzz through this pretty quickly. You know, I posed this at the city council level last time, and some of the things I'm just going to, I've kind of written some notes and tried to lay this out pretty quickly so we're not sitting here feeling, banging on this all night. But, you know, the issues that I remember being from the council level, some of the same ones that were brought up here tonight, the drainage and... Sorry. Drainage. And you know, our, our answer on that is hopefully that's going to be fixed. We're going to, we got some discussion going on downstream, and we got some people coming from the county or whatever, and hopefully we've got that fixed, was I believe exactly what he said. That's not good enough at this stage for me. You know, the road situation, you know, the council hasn't voted on funding the Wilkinson Pike extension, but even with, or the, the expansion, but even with the expansion, Mr. Huddleston made a comment at the council meeting that still three lanes doesn't get you any more capacity. So there's zero more capacity. Now, that does help some of the things that were brought up. I think Ms. Gray and some others that brought up, you know, the idea of some, getting some passage for medical vehicles and some stuff like that. So there's definitely some help in a third, in a third lane, but no more capacity. It all funnels into the same spot. You still get the same backups. You know, all of that being said, right next to Asbury, and we still don't have it fixed for Asbury, was also a problem that I had back then, I still have now. We still haven't talked really, I brought up back then about schools. You know, we just, a minute, you know, before this approved something that I believe is zoned. I know it's at least across the street. I don't, can't remember exactly where the zoning cut off, but I brought up the school zoning issue with the Brian Burns Developmental, Casey, I can't remember, River, whatever that is.
Hidden River.
Hidden River, and the apartments that are already going to go up across from World Outreach, those are all zoned actually for the same place this is, the zone, same school that this is zoned for. And our schools, I had a meeting with Trey Duke a month ago, they're, you know, we're like within 100 kids of the brand-new school already being completely full. They're all city kids. I mean, so there are just infrastructure issues that just haven't been answered, and I'm, you know, part of that's on the council to deal with, but it's not been dealt with yet. I think getting more capacity through there is going to be paramount to making it happen. One of the things that I'll kind of mention that I think is important too is the idea of we're just doing the same thing that we're already zoned for. I think Ken, Ken brought this up. The idea of getting 25% of this property being able to be developed as multifamily is with the understanding that you get the commercial with it. The idea of mixed use is that it is mixed use. And we talked about it at the meeting that, you know, hey, really to get walkability, my opinion, it may be different than some others. I get it that you could walk to eat, but you're not going to walk to eat at the same place every night likely. You know, it's just, you're still got to get up and drive to work. You need some jobs in that spot to really get some daily walkability and get traffic trips down. And to me, we still haven't answered that in this spot. I mean, you got somebody that could walk to a retail establishment to a job, and I mean, as far as kind of like, you know, a destination number of jobs in this area that you can walk to, I just don't think we're there. And I, so I think that really limits the walkability, which is, again, another one of the premises of mixed-use development. I mean, you can read the reason why we have mixed use, it's in the reasons. I mean, that's, that's clear-cut. So none of these things I, I think that we've talked about, I mean, the, the idea, it's 75% of this being kind of commercial or generating jobs, revenues, different tax rates, et cetera, et cetera, it would be, what they're talking about is 29.7 acres, it would be 58.3, so essentially, what's that, just exactly half as much is going to be dedicated to, to commercial. You know, I, I want to just bang on this, but this is just, I mean, I'm kind of go, go through all this, and I'm saying what I'm saying, and then we can move on. I'm not going to ask for anything from the developer. I, I had meetings with Matt, and I said, look, y'all know where I am on this. I've asked for the number, if you're going to get it down, get it down to a smaller number than that, and I'm not going to go asking to build a park or what, you know, pay for this or pay for that, and then I'm still going to say no, just because I don't think that's the right thing to do. But I did, I do, I do want to just confirm, I, I think two different people of the neighbors said it, and that just leaves out Mayor Kettering, so if you just nod a head or shake a head, and I just, I mean, I want to make sure I'm clear on this because I just don't remember as many times as I've been out Manson Pike in my life over all these years, I just can't remember if 20 years ago, did that water come across and flood that area to that degree right there by your house? I mean, are we, that's a certainty that it did not happen like that. I mean, I, you know, we got to admit and acknowledge that the issue is real, that we try our best, our engineers try our best to make sure we don't put more water on the next person downstream, but literally this piece of property proves that it's happening. If there wasn't flooding there, and, and what kind of gripes me, I may be a little bit about it, is the fact that the same ownership group has likely created this issue, and now, you know, saying, well, we'll fix it. So anyway, but that is what it is. I'm not going to get into that. The last thing I'll bring up, we, we talked about in, as far as multifamily at the council level, we all had a joint meeting, and I think it was pretty clear what the council said as far as the council's vision and where we want to take, and how many multifamilies, and where we want multifamilies. Do we want a whole bunch of them together? I had Gerald Lee do the math for me. Do we want a whole bunch of them together? I had Gerald Lee do the math for me last time and I'm pretty positive. I, I'd say ninety-nine percent on this, but I didn't call and ask him since that a few months ago, but I'm pretty sure the number was forty-nine hundred multifamily units within a one and a half mile radius of this spot. Some may be east of the interstate, some Margaret Anne, I think, some may be east, some may be west. Yeah, I'll just kinda tell y'all, if we were gonna do more on this corridor for me, I'd rather it be down by the fountains where there are a few more jobs at the hospital, you know, those office buildings and stuff like that. I think that makes some sense. You do get some walkability there. You gotta remember, four hundred and eighty-eight units is almost two and a half times larger than the vintage across the street. So you ride by there and take a look at that and try to conceptualize, this is gonna be two and a half times bigger than that in just the multifamily piece and two hundred units on top of that residential and a substantially less amount of commercial to help offset or help kind of pay for the residential. So anyway, one other question for one of our guys, staff, is all seventies, is it sure enough, all seventy-seven point eight acres of this is developable? I mean, does the seventy-seven eight point eight acres, does that include the berm? Uh, does that include the low areas that we're gonna use for drainage? Is that considered developable acres? I guess I'm, I'm just trying to make sure I'm square that we took twenty-five percent of the right number to get to four eighty-eight. Is it, is it, is it true that, I heard you say developable?
We have a couple different definitions of developable. I was asking Matthew if he had his zoning ordinance. And basically, it, I think in that definition, it is, excludes areas. Actually, I could probably find it pretty quickly just to definitively answer your question.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot for that. I just kinda am curious that
I'm comfortable on the spot. That's okay.
If we're going, uh, if we're going four eighty-eight for purposes of this is what it's already zoned for, I do, I guess I wanna make sure I think the math works for four eighty-eight if it's based on the entire seventy-seven point eight times twenty-five percent times twenty-five units.
Ms. Green, in the, in the
Footnote.
In the footnotes of chart one, it says, for the purposes of this end note, developable land area shall not include land constrained by natural resources, features, or barriers, historically significant areas, or structures, or overhead or underground transmit, transmission lines or easements.
Thank you.
All right. So maybe we can, maybe we can just redo the math on this at some other point, but I just guess wanna, I guess I, I heard you say developable and I thought I remembered that from the ordinance when we changed the mixed use ordinance. I do wanna just make sure whether or not it really is four eighty-eight or not.
There we go. And so it's on the screen if they wanna pull it up. But
So if it's, I, I think it's
There's a TVA line near it. If the, the area within the TVA overhead power line would be except, would not be included, but it's not actually on this property. So
Is the berm on the property?
It is on the private property. So I guess then we would have to say, if it's a natural barrier that could be excluded, generally speaking, it would be steep slopes or, or like water bodies.
I don't know that we have, I don't have to know the exact answer tonight. I mean, that's something I, you know, I'm not
So generally, no, we wouldn't. I mean, we could, we could certainly do the math pretty easy and take that berm out if you, if, and I could probably do that tonight.
The berm is manmade.
Mr. Mc, yes, Ms. Green.
So it would normally not
I would say that the berm is not exempt from this. Uh, I think this is talking about rivers, lakes, sinkholes perhaps, if they're big enough and can't be fixed. Uh, it, it is not, the, the berm is no different than a walking trail or a front lawn. It's, it's something that's being put in as a park area by the developer at the request of the city and partly with the agreement of the developer from several years ago. But I would not include, I would not exclude the berm or anything else on this property that I see
Okay.
from developable area. I don't think there's a natural feature or anything else that takes it out of that.
That's true. What you can do in RM zones, not in the gateway, if they have like half the property is Stones River and it's floodplain, they can take the overall acreage, including the floodplain and get density based on this, even though they can really own develop on half. And so this was written thinking like if you have a situation where really, like you're getting extra density based on land that you can't develop, it was with that in mind.
Okay. I'm obviously
Good question. Thanks for bringing it up.
I'm obviously opposed to it in either case.
No, I, no.
I don't wanna labor it too much, but I, I just, you know, I, I did wanna, I was curious for, for the what it's worth column when I heard you say that. I just wanted to
And I hope you don't think I'm trying to change your mind. I was trying to answer the question.
It's good. I, I just wanna know the real answer.
Yeah.
That's good.
And all of, may I just confirm, all of your calculations and comments that you're making are assuming that Area Seven is multifamily?
Correct.
So it's assuming that it's going with the option two or Plan B or whatever it was, so that they're not gonna get commercial in the next three years on that property and it is gonna be apartments?
Yeah, my understanding from the get-go was that they weren't gonna build the second building originally for three years anyway. So this kind of falls right into that category of they're gonna build it in three years. I'd love it for it to be office. If they wanna, if they wanna zone it as office without a three-year caveat, I'd be a heck of a lot more interested than I am right now. Because then you get the walkability potential, you get a lower number of, you get a lower number of units. I mean, if they wanna make it office and if they wanna come back a year and a half later after I'm off council and planning commission and try to get it rescheduled for apartments, they're, they're welcome to do so.
I will say that most of my numbers and in my presentation, I presented it as if it were Option B and not Option A. Option B is the one with the two apartment complexes.
Look, I, I don't mean to
Just to, just cause I
But just realistically speaking, yes, I am.
I just wanted to make sure that that was your, what, where you were.
Yes, it is. And, and I do wanna say from something somebody said about this Option A and Option B, it's not our option. That's their option. That just, they're just saying this is one direction they might go. Option B is another direction they may go. And yes, I am taking the kind of worst option out of the two to, to, as a
Pretty nice.
Yeah.
I just wanna confirm.
Yes, thank you.
I, I will add on, I know everybody has comments to make, but since we're right there, uh, my, my one major concern was regarding the three years, basically the phasing plan and just the fact that just, I don't, I don't know if three years is long enough to decide, you know. I have concerns about that. I, I, I don't know whether it needs to be based on something else other than just saying a flat three years from now. We could turn it into multifamily. I just think it needs a real committed effort to trying to get the commercial. And I don't know that just saying if we don't have it in three years, because for all I know, it takes that long on these other phases just to kind of even get ready to be there. And so three years from now, then you're where you would have been anyway. And so now we'll go ahead and do apartments. So I, I, that would have been the main thing that I, I wanted to have up for discussion would have been, you know, is there another option, whether it's something, I, I don't know what the other option would be, but I do feel like there's just the flat three years and it can turn into apartments is, is a concern that I, I'd like to see some other commitment from the developer trying to get that commercial in here for us. As much as we want it, you want it. I know, um, our city, our county, we, we'd love to see that.
I'll make one more comment, then I promise I'm gonna shut up.
I doubt it.
Yeah, I know. I promise this time. I promise this time.
Only Kathy, only Kathy can
No, no, it's not only Kathy. It's Leanne too. That's my wife. I will make, say to, to the bigger picture of this, you know, the idea of this mixed use thing and the reason I'm going down that, kind of that path is, you know, I'd be, when we, when we change over a commercial zoning over to a residential zoning and we go to, you know, if we just forget about what it was, okay, let's forget about what it, what it used to look like and what it is now. We're still going to a nine point one units breaker, assuming the, assuming the second apartment group. You're still going to nine point one units breaker. You know, i- is it really bringing the walkability? Is it really bringing all that stuff to warrant something that's gonna be two and a half times more than what our average number has to be in this city? And whether you wanna call it two, three point nine, or we'll just say it's twice as much as a, as a little bit of an improved, maybe we're at a four and a half now if we're, if we think we've looked at a little better sewer allocation numbers, that the, the data's come back a little better than what we first expected or whatever. It's still twice as much. Um, and, and I just can't see it. I, so, I mean, if they wanted to use up seventy-five percent of the property for residential rather than twenty-five percent of the property for residential, I'd be a heck of a lot more in favor of a town home, a single family home type of a development for the seventy-five percent number for the what it's worth column for everybody who's to the left of the podium.
I was just gonna say to your point, Mrs. Jones, as far as from a planning's perspective, we're all curious what the future of offices really does look like and how long it takes for that to bounce back. I know that in the Nashville market, Silicon Valley has been poaching our developers because a lot of their offices have gone working from home with COVID and a lot of people are not coming back. You know, State Farm's not coming back. So offices are changing right now. We're in kind of a metamorphosis or maybe we're in our, our cocoon right now and wondering what it's gonna look like in the future. And your question was about timing. Is three years enough to know that offices can come back? Maybe they look a little different where you have smaller suites in it. You don't have like one giant tenant who takes half of a building, but instead it may be that you have more flexible spaces. But, you know, we're reading articles and watching and trying to see what the, the future looks like for that. And so I can see that your point that three years may not, may, may not be enough time to see if offices really can come back. I think we, for years, maybe have relationships with different businesses, but we can see that a lot of them have seen that they don't need to pay rent on office space, but instead can kind of transfer that to homes and people can work from home. Some other people can. And so maybe to your point, there's that. And of course, to Mrs. LaLance's point, that a true mixed use would have employment centers in addition to services and a place to live is well taken, particularly as it, as it relates to the fountains. Thank you.
Thank you. Definitely understand. Agreed. Who's next?
I'll go next. So mine are, I've only got a couple. One is on the drainage. I know the requirement is that we don't put off more than what we, what's existing, but do we know from the plan if we can improve it? Or we, or does the plan say we're gonna improve it?
We've asked the design team. We said, okay, we know that as a minimum starting base, we are gonna not let you make it worse. But when we look at plan developments coming to the planning office, Mr. McKnight says, basically, what can you do for me? What is it you can bring to the table in addition to just getting your entitlement? And he's asked them, is there, are there any opportunities that you can identify to improve it, not just not make it worse? And I, you know, have been here sometime and I've heard stories. I didn't witness it, where before Target and before now, you could actually ride a canoe from Target to the Stones River Battlefield because there was so much flooding and water. The Oaks diverted a large portion of that. So, you know, maybe some of those people aren't with us anymore who told me those stories, but they did talk about what it was like then and what it's like now. I think that probably this development will be able to keep water that currently overtops the road, will probably be able to improve that. Some of what we're looking at is the county manages drainage differently and I don't know if Mayor Ketrin can help us at all, but where we have like basically a program and a system where we have inspectors and we accept all drainage easements as public. And if there's a problem, we send them out into the neighborhoods. And if there's a blockage, we remove it. We don't let people put fences up that might mess up the drainage. We make them sign an agreement that says, you know, we're coming through with our equipment. We knock it down. We're not tearing it back because that's our easement. We take ownership of that. I think the way that the county does subdivision and planning, and this of course is an older one too, it's not the same type of program. They don't have as many as inspectors and I think their state permitting is probably different than ours. So I think the simple answer, and probably you'll want Mr. Huddleston or Mrs. Noel or Mrs. Emerson to come up because they're the engineers, not me, but the easiest answer is probably we can do something to make the water stop overtopping the road is probably what we can do. But, you know, in these people's backyards, we, we're really at the mercy of the county working with this as well. And also, you know, water comes from different directions. It's not always coming from here. So we can get them to manage this and maybe something somewhere else. But the management regime for drainage in the county and the city is a little bit different in the entitlements as well. I don't know if, if any of those three people think I answered the question well enough or they wanna answer them better.
Lauren, anything else?
Uh, the, the other one was around Wilkinson Pike and timing, but I don't think there's an answer to that.
I don't have one.
Can I have Mr. Huddleston come to the podium?
Evening Chair Jones, planning commission members, Mr. Wright, how are you tonight?
Great, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Like Councilman LaLance, I was also one of the ones that voted no when it got to the council about several of these topics that came up tonight. So I'm just trying to feel warm and fuzzy. So, uh, Wilkinson Pike, it's lots of mention. Last time when it came in front of council, I said, uh, hey, I'd sit on West Park Drive trying to turn left onto Wilkinson Pike, five, five thirty. I don't remember the exact time. It took me twenty-two minutes to turn left onto Wilkinson Pike from West Park Drive. The last thing I wanna do, approve in a neighborhood, is dump on people that are already living there. So is it possible, this is gonna be a two or three-part question. If this passes planning, by the time it gets to council, can we have a plan and a budget put together for Wilkinson Pike? So maybe council can make the decision to push it up to make, to run congruently with Clary Park.
Yes, staff would be, be able to provide that information to you with some projected budgets and timeframes on potential implementation. I think we've, we've discussed, you know, the, the community investment program that, that we review each year with the mayor and council. And so, you know, there'd be an opportunity to make funding decisions and scheduling decisions based on that information and the other needs of our community.
All right. Second part is, what about a roundabout at West Park? And I mean, putting a third lane in or a turning lane and all that, that's great for traffic going down Wilkinson Pike. But when you're trying to come from one of these cross streets onto Wilkinson Pike and go against traffic, that doesn't really do anything for that type of situation. Would a turn, a roundabout work coming off of West Park onto Wilkinson Pike?
Yeah, it's a hard place to do design here at this, at this podium.
I understand you can't say, oh, it's been drawn out very fast, but
I, I think the, the, the size of the roundabout for the traffic speeds and traffic volumes would be, would, would require fairly large. I know there are examples of very high-speed, very large, very high-volume roundabouts in, in, in different areas. We have generally looked at roundabouts in, in residential streets only. Wilkinson Pike is a higher classification roadway for us to be a, a community collector, meaning it's functioning just below an arterial roadway, but higher than a, a residential roadway. And so we haven't traditionally looked at those mechanisms. We've generally favored Mr. LaLance going boo on this one, but favored signalization when we have those turning lane conflicts getting high enough to, to require some type of intervention.
And then I'm, I'm sure you've been brought to speed with all these drainage things. Your thoughts on the drainage thing, plans they have in place? Do you think they'll, there, there's a big difference in keeping the water from topping over the road and not having a drainage issue. They're two kind of different issues. Drainage over the road is terrible, but pushing your water across is still a problem, even if it's not going across the road. So what are your thoughts on this drainage improvements that they've got planned?
Yes, uh, and, and I'm gonna look, see Ms. Emerson will make her way up and I'll, I'll yield the, the mic to her and then if I can provide any additional information. But I will say that, that we've often taken advantage of a public-private partnership. We're working with the development team. Mr. Taylor and, and the, the other, others on the design team spent a lot of time looking at this and, and working on it. There are limits to what we can do with a road project and, you know, on a development project, but, but I think we've come up with in the past some very successful projects that have improved drainage conditions. Does it eliminate everybody's concerns? Very rarely. And, and there, there would be limits to how much impact we could have here, but I think Ms. Emerson can get, maybe give us an update on the investigation that's been done to date and the design and, and then if needed, I can, I can provide some more comments about that.
Sam, before you leave, so I think this would be the appropriate time to ask, whether this thing passes or not, or whether it develops or not, it sounds like that we've, we, you know, we, we as a know, we, we as a planning commission are making a promise to the neighbors of any development that supposedly any new development is not supposed to add water or a problem to their property. But it sounds like with Trust Point, that has happened. Is that something that we can look into?
Well, so, so I might take, I might take a little debate with some of the statements made about drainage tonight. I'm not gonna try to defend or honor all that, but I will tell you from the guy that reviewed and approved all those plans, I think we have made things generally better. Does that mean we don't have events that are more extreme and overtop the roadway from time to time? Yes, we still do. March the twenty-eighth, we had nine inches of rain and, you know, along Manchester Pike, we generally haven't designed very many systems in our community for nine inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. Those extreme events are still gonna happen. But, but we do look at every project and we do try to consider the downstream impacts as well as just the city regulations. And so, we still have some, we still have some drainage challenges along Wilkinson Pike. This project, Clary Park, can't fix them all, but between the projects that, that we will do on Wilkinson Pike and the other things, we'll, we will help the, many of the drainage conditions along Wilkinson Pike.
Thank you.
Hi. Okay, I have met with Matt Taylor and we have discussed the roadway plans and the drainage that are going to be, that are proposed with those roadway plans. And they are the box culvert that's supposed to go under Wilkinson Pike with the roadway improvements that will be installed with these plans so that we, that the city will get that improvement that we won't have to make in the future. They have showed us, he's run some models of the storm drainage showing that the water won't get any higher than it does. It'll, they're gonna over-deteach on the site and the water surface elevation won't get higher.
There was one other thing.
So that, that gets to...
Oh, yeah. And then they were gonna install some of the roadway drainage also that would be installed with the roadway plans. So that's expense that we won't have to incur as a city.
So, but none of that would happen until the Wilkinson Pike project was improved?
No, that's part of theirs.
Part of their project, okay.
Yes.
Which that gets to my question, which was, are we going to improve the drainage or not? So if they over-deteach, then I would assume that they're gonna improve the drainage.
Yes. And like I said, they ran models and he had the water surface elevations on there. And it was even for the hundred-year storm. So it wasn't just a ten-year or twenty-five-year storm that he's addressing. It was for the hundred-year storm.
Matt, did, did you run that simulation prior to the improvements and post-improvements? What did it look like currently? When you ran those simulations, did you show all the running over the roads and stuff like that? So I'm wondering, even if without the improvements, what that simulation looked like? I guess I'm confusing myself in my head. With the simulation, if you just, if you built this project without the improvements, what it looked like? And then with the improvements, basically?
So what I, what I concentrated on, Councilman, was that I think at the prior hearings, we'd heard complaints of overtopping of Wilkinson in two locations. One is further to the east that goes directly into the battlefield. The other is in front of what, the Hale property, which is directly east of here. And so, obviously, I can't really control the one to the east. So what I looked at was trying to solve the overtopping of what happens in front of the Hale property. And so, we sit down with staff, part of the Wilkinson Pike roadway plans installs a storm line that runs parallel to Wilkinson Pike on the south side and then crosses over into an existing detention pond. And so what we were gonna do was install that section of pipe that the city has already got designed and then discharge into that and over-deteach on our site. That would protect Wilkinson Pike in those extreme events. The Hale property would still have to do their own detention, but they could tie on to that same system in the future as well. And so, and to clarify my comments about help hopefully earlier, that is, I'm referring to some maintenance in a ditch in somebody's backyard. As Mr. Huddleston said, I can help some things. I can't fix everything. And so some of that, that's not endangering anybody's house back there. It would be good if that ditch had its flow line reestablished all the way up through there. And so that's what we were trying to get at, to help a resident based on a previous comment there, Councilman. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I don't really have any questions. I'd like to just make a couple of comments. You know, first, I think this project is terrific-looking. I love the fact that it's one cohesive plan throughout the entire development. I think that's something that we'd like to see ultimately. It's, it's very compatible with the existing structures around it, which I think is, is an excellent thing as well. And its request is consistent with the land use map. So I think that's terrific. My concerns are pretty much everything that Mr. LaLance talked about. The infrastructure setbacks that we have in place already, the multifamily units and not knowing whether or not that's going to be office space in three years or whether it's gonna be multifamily units in three years. I think not knowing that kind of goes back to the, if you don't plan, if you don't, if you fail to plan, you plan to fail. So my concerns lay on that unknowingness of that, of that plan for three years from now. And I, and I'd like to, and the young lady over here with the emergency vehicles, I hadn't even, I had not even thought about that as an issue. So thank you for bringing that up. That's all I've got, really got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Salas.
I think that, you know, if I was gonna think about this plan tonight, what we're looking at, it's such a big plan and there's so many pieces and parts. And we've looked at a lot of it for a lot of time now over the past couple of years. So I think it says a lot that we're, we're not spending a lot of time looking at each and every little section of this. I mean, I think we're kind of beyond a lot of that. I feel real good about the changes that you've made to the plan from what we saw and approved last year. And I think all you've done is improve on that. I do think if I was going to consider anything that would approve this plan tonight, if it's even possible with all the drainage and infrastructure issues that we have, but I would want to only approve it with master plan. The master plan would just be what we see on option A. It wouldn't be master plan, option A, or master plan, option B. It'd just be master plan and it would be that page that we're looking at as option A, which would show Area Seven as commercial. And in three years or five years or whatever, and offices don't exist anymore or something like that, and you have to, then we've gotta relook at what we do with that one section that we thought was gonna be office and it's not gonna be office. And maybe we're making a change to our plan, which, you know, we can do later and bring it back and we could make a change to that. But that, that would be what I would think I would be at least open to if we did, if, depending on how we move forward with this tonight, would be, our master plan would be what we're looking at as option A.
I, I'll make a comment or two. I voted for this when it came before us in 2020. I'm very much in favor of having rooftops and commercial in the same area. I think that even the commercial along Medical Center Parkway adds a lot to this development. We can get caught up in percentages and that sort of thing to a degree, but I do think that folks would be literally walking to whatever develops on Medical Center Parkway and, for that matter, maybe crossing Medical Center Parkway at certain lights to go to the avenues and that sort of thing. So that part I really like. I noticed that we have four out of the seven city council people here tonight. So I think that, that if it passed at that level, they would have heard the needs associated with Wilkinson Pike. And hopefully, that would, whatever the plan design that, that staff would come up with, that would get higher on the priority list based upon this development coming to fruition if, in fact, that's what happens. You know, I think that, you know, if it passes at this level, I'd have to agree with Mrs. Jones. I think that doing not A or B, but just A would make this more conceivable and, and I probably shouldn't say what I'm about to say, but probably more a chance of, of passing at the next level, once it gets passed Planning Commission. But that, that, that's not my, I shouldn't say my concern, but I do think that, that from you as an applicant's standpoint, if you can make that work, I think that would be to your advantage.
So I'm, I'm past the point of not gonna say anything else.
That was only in the, that was only in the question phase. That was only in the question phase.
I am just impressed on how long you actually made it without saying...
I'm holding my lip.
No, this is very simple. It's a, I think it's a valid point to consider as, as you guys think through what you want to do on this. But we have to vote on a budget. The council has to vote on our budget in a month or less. I mean, I don't know, we're gonna, our first, yeah, it's in June at some point. I mean, we're gonna know with some degree of certainty whether or not there's gonna be any funding for this for at least eighteen months or whatever you wanna call it, in four weeks, five weeks. We have to have it by July first, but I think we typically have it by June fifteenth. So in five weeks...
I think second reading is the second week of June.
Our planned second reading right now, the second week of June, that's typical. So, you know, as far as the, I'm just saying, there won't be any mystery to whether or not Wilkinson Pike is gonna get improved in the next eighteen months, in five weeks from right now, for the what it's worth and however that falls into, however you guys wanna think about that in relation to your decision tonight.
Our decision.
Negotiation.
I've already said it.
Mr. Taylor.
So we've heard the conversation. We would like to maybe entertain if we changed Area Seven from a multifamily or rental to a for-sale type product, if that matters in, in your mind? Or is it just strictly because it's any form of residential? If it becomes a for-sale product in Area Seven instead of a rental?
So no multifamily, so single-family attached or single-family detached?
Maybe it's a stacked condo type thing, but it's not a, what you would call an apartment. It is a for-sale. So right now, inside of the use chart, there is a for-sale, there's detached and attached. And that attached would include the stacked flats, if I'm not mistaken. And so it would be a non-rental for-sale product.
Still looks the same, still, I mean, I saw Mr. O'Shea kinda nod his head when he asked about single-family attached, but, but you said maybe it's gonna be stacked.
It could be, I mean, so, so...
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice to be here. Walter O'Shea with Heinz for the record. If we were to, we haven't designed any specific product, obviously. You know, that would be a for-sale condo product. But what we're hearing is that, you know, what, what the Planning Commission and we think City Council maybe would like to hear would be to remove the ability to do multifamily, you know, which defined under the code in Area Seven. Preserve the ability to do commercial, preserve the ability to do a, a for-sale product, whether that's single-family attached or single-family detached, which would include townhomes or condo in that area. So preserve that ability. Obviously, our, our first choice is gonna be to try to go and get an office tenant. You know, I think Margaret Ann, I think her comments were, were on point, that office market is in disarray right now. We're seeing that throughout our portfolio. And in particular, suburban office that where people can work from home is probably the area where you're gonna see more contraction than anything. And that's what we're starting to see in our portfolio. So we would like to do that. And that would be our, our preference and what we'll pursue for the next several years. But at some point, we're gonna be investing all this, all these dollars in infrastructure. We've committed to do that. And at some point, we have to be able to, to move forward with, with a product on that property or the project fails. And a failed project in this location is not good for the city either. And so we want, we need to have a fallback. And that fallback needs to be some type of a residential use if we can't get, get office or commercial to go there. But, you know, we're willing at this point to pull, to remove basically multifamily as a use in Area Seven. Would modify and suggest if you were to make a motion, to make a, make a motion, you know, to approve the plan as is with that one modification.
Are you willing to extend the timeframe?
Well, we're removing, we're removing it altogether as a use.
No, in reference to going past three years before you make the change to the condo unit.
Oh, to go to it.
Yeah.
The challenge with that is we've, we've committed to timeframes of doing infrastructure already. And we don't wanna change those commitments to the city because we think putting that infrastructure in is important. For example, the completion of Willow Oak, without the completion of Willow Oak, a couple of years from now, traffic on Wilkinson Pike will be much worse. Willow Oak is an important reliever for that. The city transportation department has confirmed that. Our traffic engineer has confirmed that. We need to get that roadway in. So, and even if you think of the three-year timeframe, that's only when we could start construction of infrastructure. It would then be, you know, six months to a year of infrastructure work, another six months to a year of any product being developed. So we're really talking five to six years down the road before you have anyone occupying those units, given that three-year timeframe.
Does it, does it make sense, I don't have anything to throw up there, but does it make any sense to defer this, to get a little bit more detail on what we're talking about as it relates to what that might look like attached? Or we don't wanna just iron that out, hash it out here tonight? Just, you know, it's, it's got my wheels turning for sure. I mean, I just kinda am a little nervous on saying, yeah, I'm willing to go ahead with it. And then if I go ahead with it here, then it comes back to council and it was a different type of attached than what I thought it was. And then I say no then, I'll feel bad. I don't wanna, I mean...
We've got the, we've got the single-family detached product and single-family detached and attached are in the book. So if we were to develop that product, you have that design. If we were to wanna do some type of a stacked flat or condo, we would have to bring it back because we're gonna have to, we would have to modify the site plan. It would have to be a PUD modification anyway because it would be a new site plan. So it would have to come back to council. And at that point, you would have product design as well. Because it's in, because it's in the PUD section, you know, it's, you're approving a specific site plan. And so if that site plan changes, if it's any, any other use other than office at this point, we would have to bring it back as a PUD modification.
It's one thing I kind of, I don't know. I'm just thinking in my head. And this gets dangerous when I start just saying what's coming in my head. But I'm kinda just trying to grasp, make sure I understand, what's the total number gonna look like? The total density, the total number of units gonna look like if we make this change? That's kind of some of the questions I wanna make sure I've worked through before I start. You know, so if we go to something that looks like that for that piece of property, what does that do to our total number?
Well, again, we would have, right now, there would be zero residential units in that because there would only be office permitted.
Sorry, if I, if I keep looking at it in this same way I've been looking at it, which is assuming it's gonna end up as residential. And I don't want, I'm not doing that from an evil standpoint, I promise. I'm just trying to do it from a, I need to know what I'm getting myself into if I vote for it standpoint, okay? I just, I just...
Is it, is it similar in size to Area Six?
Yeah, it would be.
Like you'd almost take Area Six and you could duplicate that down in Area Seven.
It could be. I mean, I, you know, I mean, to be fair, if we were to do, it could be a higher-density for-sale product, too. It could be a three- or four-story condo with, you know, commercial on the ground level. So, you know, but again, it would require a modification. So we'd have to, we'd have to bring that back, Councilman LaLance, because it's, you know, there's no site plan right now that shows that.
Here's a question. It would still be no more than 488? Or are you saying that would allow more than 488?
No, it would be less than 488.
Even with a stacked flat?
Yeah, yes. It would be no more than 488, right? Because that's, that's the underlying zone. We would exceed that.
Come on, Matt, you know this off the top of your head. How many are in, how many units are in Area Six? Margaret Ann, you know that. Margaret Ann, you know that.
How many units are in where, sorry?
Right now, in Area 6.
I got it right here.
My eyes can't read that little print that I see.
It's 100 and.
Find the page.
Area 6 has 65. Oh, wait. Yep, 65. 10 to 1 units per acre.
How many?
65 total, 10 to 1 units per acre.
65 townhomes and single-family?
Area, hang on, sorry. 6 is, is, yeah, it is. It's got the single-family faces, Willow Oak.
Here's what I want to make sure I'm clear on, okay, guys? And I'm sorry, but I don't want to belabor, but I just need to make sure I'm clear. So we're talking, if we look at the 2020 chart, sorry, the 2021 chart of all the different areas, we got 8.5 acres in Area 7. In Area 6, we're at 10.2 acres, units per acre, which, which, so we, if we applied that same, if you're saying we're gonna go to that same kind of setup as what's in Area 6, we can just apply 10.2, point two times 8.5 acres, we're gonna be going to like 87-ish attached units as opposed to 208.
Attached and/or detached.
Yeah, attached and/or detached, however it shakes out, as opposed to the 208 number that's currently in that, if the worst-case scenario happens. Is that what we're saying, or is that not what we're saying? I just want to make clear.
I'll tell you what I think I hear them saying, and I'd like for them to say, tell me. They, what I heard is that they'd like to find a way to reach the 208 units in Area 7, and that could be with single-family detached townhomes or condominium-style living, which is called stacked flats.
There's a little difference in what I think I hear.
There's difference, and so saying that is what I thought I heard, and that's what I want them to clear.
Mr. O'Shea, where are you at on that? Are we at 208, or are we at 88? Yeah, 100 even.
General.
We'd prefer to be, we'd prefer to be able to do something higher-density in there. I mean, we're just trying to be able to support the land value that we've committed to pay to Mr. Gatton. And it's gonna be, as is, we've added single-family homes, which are very low-density. I mean, we're just, we're struggling to kind of make the math work here. So we'd prefer to keep the density if we could, but eliminate the apartment use.
And the ownership, the ownership, look, I think ownership is always better than rental, that's why I've had concerns about, you know.
Right.
The rental situation in other areas of town, I mean, et cetera, et cetera. But keeping the density the same still doesn't change anything to a school's traffic and all the other things we've talked about.
Split it in the middle? Call it a day? Come on.
Can I sleep on it just like a couple of nights?
Jeez.
My gosh.
Give us 150 units.
When's our next meeting? Planning Commission?
May 19th.
May 19th.
Sing it for us, Rick.
2 o'clock on the 19th.
No, oh, is it 2?
2 o'clock on the 19th, I think.
All right, I mean, I guess, I guess what Matt suggested, I guess it's a good one. If we would lower that to 120, that makes the total 400 units, which I think.
I've committed to that.
That work?
For-sale. 120 for-sale on Area 7? And that's gonna be some kind of the detached or whatever, so that's gonna get us, I don't know that I have to do.
Attached or detached, or stacked flats, or whatever.
Same, just not for red.
Maximum 120.
So same requirement as the other for-sale areas, which is non-mass rental?
Correct. Yeah.
All right, here's what I'm gonna do then. I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion. Yeah, sorry.
Any other comments or questions before I think we're gonna have a motion? Anybody? Okay, go for it.
We've been wiggling around with some math here, and I have talked to Matt multiple times, which is why I don't feel like I need to go through my math, because I had done some math based on this, and I think that number, the 120, gets the number to a number that I've said that I could be more comfortable with from an infrastructure standpoint, et cetera, et cetera. I think I'm there, and so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve it tonight. I'm still gonna give you a little bit of a caveat, that I still want to make sure I'm gonna sit down with Mr. Taylor again, make sure we've ironed out how exactly how these numbers are shaking out, because we've wiggled around between apart, between areas and all that kind of stuff. So just to make sure, you know, I'm still gonna work on it, but I think it's to a spot where it's been where I've talked about it before, and I'm more comfortable with the, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve it.
Based off?
Based on, based on the changes that we've just discussed in Unit 7, going to 120 on attached or detached for-sale units.
Second.
And any other staff comments? Do I need to say that? Likely. I'll just say it for just saying it.
See, Margaret Ann's jumping up here to see if we left something out.
If that is a motion that passes, I'd like the opportunity to bring the revised plan back to you before it goes to council. Generally, we would just take that motion and funnel straight to council. And I'm not asking you to defer it, but I'm just saying that I would like for me to look at it and you all to look at the changes before it goes to council, just so that we all are still flying in the same direction and have the same information. That's my request, of course, it's up to you, and I can make anything work.
Good.
Yeah, two weeks, we'll see it in two weeks, and then I'll go to council. He'll have it done in two weeks.
Yeah, the March 18th meeting.
I think our expectations would have a different site plan or something there, is what I was going with. Is that your expectation as well?
At our next meeting.
For council, that there would be a revised site plan to reflect these changes, and the book would be revised to change the uses permitted, is what I was moving forward with. Walt just said something that confused me. So, Mr. Taylor, can you tell me what the plan is? They'll revise the book. Great, thanks.
All right.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all very much for working with us on that, and thanks to everyone that came out tonight to speak on this.
Rick, you got any place you need to be? Yes, my son just came back from college.
He did, he's trying to get home, I know it.
They're waiting on me for dinner, starving to death.
Okay, all right. We have another very important public hearing coming up, so next item is a. Okay. Here we go. Next item is a street renaming, to rename an approximately two-mile-long segment of Mercury Boulevard, west of South Rutherford Boulevard, to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. Our next public hearing is with regards to a street renaming of Mercury Boulevard, and I'm gonna go ahead and present the next two items, because they kind of, they kind of go hand in hand. And what I would recommend that you do is conduct both public hearings, there are two separate public hearings with regards to the street renaming, and then take action, rather than doing them piecemeal, because they really do go hand in hand. So back in February, council raised the issue of the potential renaming of Mercury Boulevard to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, and directed staff to study the matter and bring it back to council for additional discussion. And on the March 10th council workshop meeting, staff brought back a report to council, and council then directed staff to take the item to the Planning Commission for its consideration. Planning Commission discussed the item at its April 21st day meeting and scheduled it tonight for a public hearing. There are actually two public hearings, and we've got the map in front of you of the entirety of Mercury Boulevard. The area in green is proposed to be renamed to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. It is the area bounded on its west side by Southeast Broad Street, which would be the western terminus of Mercury Boulevard, and on its east side by its intersection with South Rutherford Boulevard. It's about a two-mile-long segment, and you'll see that there is a small 600-foot segment east of South Rutherford Boulevard that is in the red color, that is proposed to be renamed to John Bragg Highway, so that there's a clean break at South Rutherford Boulevard where the street name changes to, from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard to John Bragg Highway. Right now, I think most people probably assume that the street name changes to John Bragg Highway at South Rutherford Boulevard, but there's actually about a 600-foot segment there that is named Mercury Boulevard. And there are two properties that have, that are addressed off of Mercury Boulevard there, one of which happens to have about 230 or so dwelling units. It's an apartment complex, Tennessee Park Apartments, which is on the north side of Mercury Boulevard there, the other being on the south side, the Circle K that was built a couple of years ago there. So there are two separate public hearings. Now I'll give you a little bit of background on the street renaming and on the street itself. First of all, the Planning Commission, per the city subdivision regulations, which were duly adopted by the Planning Commission, state that the Planning Commission shall have final authority over street names. Having consistent and logical protocols for street naming and property addressing aids in predictability for the general public as well as for service providers, including emergency service providers. So you are the official body tasked with this, with this, the decisions regarding street naming. In an effort to clarify when renaming a street is appropriate, the Planning Commission adopted the following policy in January of 2019. It shall be the policy of the City of Murfreesboro Planning Commission to rename existing streets only when a legitimate public interest is served, and only when it promotes the public health, safety, and welfare of the community as a whole, e.g., in conjunction with a road construction project, or to eliminate confusion for emergency service providers. The Planning Commission shall not endorse street renaming requests that do not meet the standard. That's the policy that was adopted. And that policy was adopted to provide guidance for the Planning Commission in determining when to rename streets. Before the Planning Commission votes on a renaming, it has traditionally held a public hearing. We can't find any legal basis for that being the case, it's been more of a customary practice. Anytime that we have renamed a street, that we have conducted a public hearing. We did send out notices to, for both segments, sent out notices to every affected property owner and every affected tenant, i.e., if there was a business renting a space, or if there was a resident renting a space, they were mailed individual notices. And in those, in those notices, we included a question-and-answer brochure about, about how that would impact them and what the city would do to implement the street name change. We also put our notice in the Murfreesboro Post, as we customarily do, and we, one thing that we did do, because of the magnitude of this, of this request, is, and I credit Mr. LaLance for this recommendation, and for Mr. McKnight for making it happen within just a matter of days, was, was generating some signs to put out along the route. There were a total of 12 signs that we put up notifying the public of the street renaming. And after those signs were put up, we were inundated with a lot of calls, so that was a great idea in helping to get the word out. I think it did a great job of letting people know what was going on. So we did, we did make a very concerted effort to get the word out about this, and as I mentioned, the public did, did call in and wanted to know what was going on. So additional background on Mercury Boulevard, it appears that Mercury Boulevard was named Mercury Boulevard around the time that it was constructed back in the 1950s. It was constructed in two phases. The first phase was constructed in the 50s, and the second phase out towards Rutherford Boulevard was constructed sometime after that. The earliest subdivision plat that we could find calling out the roadway as Mercury Boulevard was around 1955. And a 1945 plat of the lots near the intersection of Mercury and Carver shows a Washington street in the vicinity of where Mercury Boulevard right-of-way is located. So ironically, that street appears to originally have been named after George Washington Carver. Staff is not certain of the reason why the highway was named Mercury Boulevard when it was constructed. However, there are other streets located in the area of Mercury that appear to have been named for Roman and Greek gods, such as Mars, Diana, Minerva, Atlas, Venus, Olympia, and Apollo. And then, most of those streets were named right around the same time that Mercury Boulevard was constructed. Upon reviewing the request by council, staff reviewed the existing street naming and addressing numbering conditions. There are approximately 400 or so addresses that would be impacted by the street renaming. About 360 of those are residential addresses, and that's kind of a hodgepodge of different types of residential uses. As I mentioned, the Tennessee Park Apartments has about 230 units on its own. There are a number of other smaller apartment complexes, as well as a couple of condominium complexes, Mercury Manor, for example, and some single-family residential detached, and duplexes along this route as well that would be impacted. The, one of the things that, that we think is a benefit to this is renaming that segment of Mercury Boulevard east of Rutherford Boulevard. That is, you know, as I mentioned, until I researched it a few years ago when I addressed the Circle K, and I just assumed that it was a, and I'm the guy who's been doing addressing and street naming for the city since 2006, and I just assumed that that was John Bragg Highway, but it's not, it's Mercury Boulevard, that first 600 feet. And so I think that reduces confusion, and it aids in the predictability of where that street name change happens. I think there will probably be a handful of numerical addresses that will need to, numerics that will need to change as well, but the vast majority of the properties will be able to retain their numerical addresses. I think that the, there is a split block around Rutherford Boulevard, where I think that some of the 2,300s are on the east side of Rutherford Boulevard, and some are on the west side of Rutherford Boulevard, and I think we may have to reconcile that in some form or fashion. So what we do, and the impact to property owners and tenants, we make a concerted effort to make it as easy as possible. Obviously, it is a, there is somewhat of an inconvenience, or a hardship, or a burden on the, on the residents and the businesses and the property owners. We try to take as much of that out of the, out of the situation as we can. When it's all said and done, there still is, you know, some work to be done and some adjustment by the, by the owners and the tenants and the residents. But what we do is, we put the implementation date far enough out so that all the property owners and tenants have ample time to do what they need to do to adjust on their end, and all the service providers that we notify, such as the post office, emergency service providers, utilities, will have enough time to implement the change in their system. What we don't want to do is have a utility that hasn't changed the records, hasn't had enough time to change the records, or a business who hasn't had enough time to contact their, their, their customers. So typically, what we'll do is we'll send out a notice to the service providers and to the residents and property owners roughly three months in advance of the, of the implementation date, and then we'll send out a second notice roughly a month in advance of the implementation date as a reminder, as time gets closer. People may have kind of pushed it aside and said, and said, I'll deal with that later. Here, we kind of nudge them a little bit, knowing that it's, that it's, that it's coming along. The impact to service providers, we did contact Rutherford County E-911, and I see that Mr. Smith, the Director of Rutherford County Emergency Communications District, who spoke at the last public hearing, I don't see him in attendance, he, his office was contacted, as was the Fire and Rescue Department, the Police Department, and the Transportation Department. So some of the feedback that we got from those departments, they were, the emergency service providers were in favor of. service providers were in favor of the, the break at Rutherford Boulevard. They see that as a definite improvement to the current situation. Also, the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District identified the fact that there is an existing Mercury Drive in Laverne. It doesn't share any of the same address ranges as Mercury Boulevard, but I think anytime that we can eliminate a street name duplication, that's a positive for the possibility of, of reducing confusion. But the Police Department and the Fire Department both indicated that they could implement this change, and they were comfortable with, with implementing the, the change in their departments. The Transportation Department gave us an estimate of how much it would cost to, to replace the street signs. It would be a cost of about $10,000 to replace the street signs, and with enough lead time, they would be able to make that happen by the implementation date. One issue that I did want to mention, as it's been advertised, it's advertised as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. One of the, one of the points that I brought up at the day meeting last time that Rutherford County E-911 identified to us was that the coincident use of the abbreviation for doctor is coincident with the abbrevia, the street name abbreviation for drive. They reached out to their GIS vendor and said that, basically, in a perfect world, that would, that would work, but based on the chance of human error, the way the computer reads it, that could have an impact on how, on, on emergency response by the, by the coincident use of the doctor abbreviation, which is the same as, as drive. And so that could potentially, you know, I want to make sure that you are, are, you know, have, have all the information in front of you. That could potentially cause some, i-if it's not input just right, or if the computer doesn't read it as it's supposed to, that could potentially cause some issues that, that DR abbreviation for doctor at the beginning of the street name. Also, our Transportation Department indicated to us that the, the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which, which they use in, in their practice, and which is, which is standard practice for transportation engineers, does not recommend the duplication of one of those suffixes like, like drive or street for any other purpose, any other transportation-related purpose other than its use as an abbreviation for the street suffix such as drive. So both our Transportation Department and the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District have expressed some concern about the use of, of the doctor abbreviation.
Can I ask a question on that real quick?
Sure.
Is it, is it, is it just, if it was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, would that be different than if it's Dr. Martin Luther King Drive?
No, I-
I mean, is it because it's in the same sign, or is it just the fact that it's being used at all, that the DR is being used at all?
I think it's that the DR is being used at all. I think, you know, there are some, some streets that, you know, like in other communities that might be like Avenue A, where the suffix comes first. And I think the, the, the risk is the reading of the suffix as, or the reading of the abbreviation for doctor as the suffix for drive. And the, the way that the computer systems, the emergency dispatch computer, computer systems would read that and how it's input by the humans who are, who are, who are putting that in there.
Can I ask one question? Can we just spell doctor out, or is there just like so many characters allowed on a sign?
So, so our Transportation Department has, has expressed concern about the length of the, of the name, and the longer we make that, the, 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 I think they're-
Worse that problem.
They're, they're, they're looking at, you know, the character size of the, of the, the font size on the, on the sign, and, and I actually did pose that question to the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District, and they mentioned that that could in, in and of itself cause confusion because people may be, may, many people may actually use the abbreviation even if it's spelled out as doctor. And so as I mentioned earlier, predictability in street naming, especially for emergency services, it, predictability and consistency is, is of paramount importance.
One of the things, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I did try to research this a little bit and try to see kind of where people do use it and don't use it, and it, you know, if you Google and just get on there and start looking at websites, there's a lot of discussion about it just, you know, just Martin Luther King Jr., you know? I mean, it doesn't have, there's a lot of articles or whatever you want to call it that just don't have that in there, just for what it's worth column. But something that I was thinking about as it relates to the 911, and I don't really understand the, the software well enough to know why it would or wouldn't. The only thing I could come up with is maybe when you get the automated voice, you know, that reads it out to you, that that can't, the term, you know, if, if it sees DR while it's giving directions, it's probably going to say drive, you know what I mean? And that, that was the part is just an automated voice activated deal or something. So I, I kind of just have to defer to them. I mean, I, I'm-
I guess my only comment would be, it's like that in a lot of cities.
Yeah.
Why would it be any different for us or any more confusion for them? I mean, a lot of large cities use doctor.
I, I don't know that I can answer that.
Yeah, I get, my question on it was, is it because it's used there that we know now that it's a, that it's an issue? You know, I didn't, I don't know. I was, I was wondering, I wondered that. Do we have other, speaking of that, do we have other roads that are named doctor or something already? I mean, do we know that?
I, I don't believe so. I know-
Harrison Drive, but that's not-
There, there are other, there are other, like titles, like, for example, by the, by the New Wal-Mart and Memorial Boulevard, new, eight-years-old, Lieutenant Patrick McBride Drive. There's Captain Joe Fulgham, I think that's spelled out as Captain, though. There's, there's St. Andrews Drive, which is, which is the same abbreviation for street, and I'm, that's, that's kind of a constant battle for me. I always have to tell our surveyors and engineers who submit plats and plans, please spell out Saint instead of putting S.T. Andrews Drive. But, you know, certainly wanted to make sure that, that you all had all the information.
I know, I've been in some big city where even, I, I just remember seeing on the sign it was just MLK Boulevard. I, I guess, you know, there's all kinds of-
Yeah, I'm curious.
But every city, you know?
I, I did, there, there's actually a Wikipedia page that lists all the streets named after Dr. King, state by state, and I think there were eight or nine in Tennessee, and it kind of ran the gamut for how, for how they, how they formed the, the street name. Some included the doctor, I want to say one or two may have been MLK. Some had Martin Luther King without the doctor. So it's, it kind of ran the gamut.
Do they all have the junior attached on the name? Do you remember?
You know, I can, it's the great thing about Wikipedia.
Well, it's not a big deal.
We can-
The doctor is the issue.
After the-
Yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can certainly pull that up. Just, just to, just to wrap up real quick, as, as far as staff's recommendation, as previously stated, the subdivision, subdivision regulation states that proposed street names may not duplicate existing street names. We feel that the, that the elimination of the duplication with the Mercury Drive in Laverne is, is a positive. Even though the street number ranges are not coincident, elimination of any kind of duplicate street names, we see as being a positive. Creating the street name break at Rutherford Boulevard, we see that as being a positive, and I think our emergency service providers see that as being a positive, too. And I think motorists will see that as being a positive, and I think that, that will eliminate confusion about where that street name changes. Beyond the items noted above, however, is the reason this proposed street name change was brought up in February, which is to honor the substantial contributions made by Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. in the advancement of civil rights in our nation and as a result in our community as well. In addition, it is intentional that Mercury Boulevard was chosen to be studied for this renaming, as it is located in an area of significant cultural and historical importance. Renaming a major street after Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. embraces the diversity of our community and honors the legacy of Dr. King. The street renaming policy states that renamings must serve a legitimate public interest and promote the public health, safety, and welfare of the community as a whole, and staff believes that this renaming achieves these goals. I'll be happy to answer any additional questions before or after the public hearing. I did tell a couple of residents who, who said that they could not be here tonight, that I would pass along to them their, their cor, pass along to you their correspondence. There are emails placed on your desks, one from Terry and Deborah Holmes, and the other from Brandy and Matthew Galippo. So I'd like to let the record show that, that those, that those emails have been provided to you.
Did you hear it? My goodness.
Be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we advertised for two public hearings, one for the, one for the long segment and one for the short segment.
Okay. Let's go ahead and open our public hearing unless we've got any other comments before we start that. Okay. We'll open the public hearing first on the two-mile segment between Mercury Boulevard west of South Rutherford Boulevard. So anybody want to come up and speak on this item?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Violet Cox Wingo, 223 Enns Brook Boulevard. And I stand before you tonight as the third vice president for the Murfreesboro N.A.C.P. And we wholeheartedly support item number C, the renaming of the segment of Murfrees Boulevard. We consider this a wonderful opportunity for community healing and for building bridges. We all know of the work that Dr. King did. He was a drum major for all people, people of color. And every last one of us here tonight, we represent people of color. As I sat here tonight listening to the issues here in Murfreesboro, building, expanding, there is a need for collaboration, diversity, and inclusion. Looking at MTSU University, over 19,461 students, inclusion, diversity. The Department of Veteran Affairs, the largest healthcare system in the world, the sixth largest VA, right here, the campus of Avon C. York is a part of that, inclusion, diversity. There's been a lot that's happened this past year. This would be a wonderful opportunity for the community to come together as a whole and to show something positive that is going on here in Murfreesboro. When I was doing my own research, I looked at the state of Tennessee, and there are eight counties or cities within Tennessee that has the name of Doc, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. In the spirit of Yujama and collective work, I ask that we come together as a community and to work together, and this would be a wonderful way to bridge the gap. Again, in the spirit of Yujama collective work, this can be done. People want to be included, and we are here. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Thank you, Chairwoman Jones and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Robert White. I live at 4910 General Eisenhower Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. General Eisenhower Drive. One thing I have noticed since I've moved here, especially in my subdivision, Liberty Heights subdivision, we have over 300 homes, and all those streets are named after American heroes, folks who are considered great and has made this country great and, and have such great history. And I think that's what we're asking for you to do tonight, to recognize an American hero. Too many times, we, we think about what he talked about, and, and he did. He advocated for civil rights, but more importantly, he advocated for human rights. And, and he represented what is true and what is great about this country. And that's what we're always talking about, you know, what is great about this country? We're asking that you consider this naming, renaming of this two areas, but specifically the one you're considering right now, and ask that you will consider doing that for variable reasons. I moved here five years ago, and one of the reasons I moved to Murfreesboro was, I'm from Johnson City, East Tennessee, and we were always looking at the middle Tennessee region thinking, well, what's going on down there? This is like a gold mine or something because they're growing like crazy, economically, things are just really kicking. And I had a chance to serve on our planning commission there and chair, and I remember having to consider renaming of roads and streets. And I remember some of the angst that I went through as a commissioner, because there's some, there's pros and cons, as he mentioned earlier, some of the things you'll go through on the renaming. But I think the pros outweigh the cons in this situation. And I enjoy living here. I enjoy the fact that there's diversity here, there's diversity in thought, there's ethnic diversity, because I think that's what makes us great as, as America. We are such a melting pot. This is an opportunity to say to a segment in this community that we want to recognize a truly great American, so thank you for that consideration.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thanks for being here. Who's next? Anybody else come on to speak? Okay. We will close the public hearing, and then you asked to go ahead and have the next public hearing, and then we'll have some discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
We will open the public hearing to discuss renaming the segment, the 600-foot-long segment of Mercury Boulevard that is east of South Rutherford Boulevard to the John Bragg Highway City of Murfreesboro Planning Department, was the applicant. Anything else to add to that, or we'll just open that public hearing?
Yes, ma'am. Just open the public hearing.
Did anybody like to speak on this item tonight? We will close that public hearing, and we will open the floor for discussion, and then we will take a vote on each of these two items. Comments, questions?
Matthew, my only question would be, I'm sorry, thank you.
Go ahead.
I noticed five, five of the names of streets in Tennessee of the eight are all named Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard as opposed to Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Was that part of y'all's consideration, or does that, do you think that weight, makes any weight on whether or not we should include that doctor or not?
You know, I think, I think what, what I'm bringing you is just the, the feedback that we've received from the Transportation Department and the Rutherford County Emergency Communications District. Ultimately, it will be up to you. And the, the, as, as you can see, I pulled up the Wikipedia page with the list of, of roadways named for Dr. King in Tennessee, and, and you can see that it is, it is a mixture of, of forms of, of his name as to how those street names have been, have been, have been done in those communities.
You look down, even below that, there's a whole lot down below that, too, in different states, and then up above it, too, I don't know what the state is, looks like that's must be South, you know, South Carolina.
South Carolina.
Yeah. Those are all-
It's, South Carolina's all Martin Luther King.
And none of them have doctor in South Carolina.
I would bet there's a-
Go ahead, sorry.
Sorry. Possibility, even if you could go back and see the date of when they named them, that maybe it is the, like you mentioned, Matthew, that originally they were doing Dr. Martin Luther King, and then they were finding the issues and problems with that, and then they're trying to convert to doing the Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
And, and I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if the software that's used is, is, is consistent throughout- is consistent throughout the nation, or if, or if different jurisdictions use different software, is that have, may have different implications. I really couldn't say.
I mean, I, I'll just, look, I'll tell you kind of what I'm thinking on this. I mean, first of all, I do want to say, make a comment that I, I made from a different name change that we went through. I think I was actually in the crowd, I can't remember if it was my first meeting or if I was in the crowd watching before I actually showed up to my, you know, I had my first meeting, but it was a different one. I had made phone calls, talked to residents, all that kind of stuff, and, and Mr. White is correct, there's definitely angst over the issue. And I, I'll just kind of commit to you guys, I can't, I can't commit for the council, so I'm not going to do that, but what I will commit to you is that I'm going to take that idea back to the council as it relates to this name change and other name changes that we kind of go, you know, that we may want to get, you know, have a little, you know, try to help out business owners and residents as far as their costs that go along with that, it'd just be a very small kind of twenty-five or fifty-dollar kind of a thing. I'm just going to mention that, that I'll bring that back to council so that y'all know that when, when you're making your decision on that. I mean, I don't want, look, I, I'm sitting here kind of struggling, I'm just going to say it like I'm feeling right now. I'm struggling with this from a standpoint of not whether or not we're going to rename this road, or whether or not I think we rename it, it's just this whole whether, and I don't want the doctor to get in the way of getting the name changed, you know, and, and I, I'm just kind of struggling with that, how, how important would it be to Dr. King himself, to, you know, I mean, his family, whatever, you know, I mean, to, to say, well, it's, that's just a, you know, I mean, obviously, there's a lot of roads that don't have it, and I, I, if I just simply thinking about this, to just say, well, clearly, it is not on there for a lot, let's just get this thing done, let's not confuse or even bear up the chance of confusion, nine-one, confusing nine-one-one, and drop that DR off there, that kind of seems like a simple thing, but I don't want, I don't want to oversimplify.
For me, I have a preference for the doctor, just because of the history and behind it.
Yeah.
I think if we put the doctor on it and we do more research around if it's really going to cause an issue, because there are many cities with it, and they've found a way around it. But if you're going to preserve the history of, of Dr. King, almost everybody up here has said doctor before.
Yeah, I know.
Say Martin, everybody said doctor. And then if you get it to council and, and you need to remove it, then remove it.
It doesn't go to, it's, this tonight, that's kind of, and that's actually another thing I was thinking about, was if we put it on there and it does cause a problem, then we're going to change everybody's address again.
Yeah.
If we drop it off, you know, we got, they got to go through the entire, changing the name and all that kind of stuff, that, that was.
Yeah, I, I think it's a problem going against what our nine-one-one and, you know.
I know, and of course.
I, I, I just, I have a problem with that.
And of course, they no way diminish anything about the doctor, you know, title, preface, but.
And I, I have to say, I mean, I also grew up in a family with, my father was a doctor, and I could never, ever use the word doctor in front of his name. We were not to do that, you didn't say that, you spoke his name, his name should stand for him, he didn't need that title in front of his name to have anything to do with what you would think about the man. And so, I, I just, that's the way I grew up, so. Does certainly not diminish anything from the, the man himself, but, and, and in Martin Luther King's case, he, he does, yeah, he doesn't need that in front of his name for everybody, him to have the respect that he has in this country, you know. Yes.
I'm not going, I don't mean to do this real, but are we able to reopen the public hearing? And I, Councilmember Wade is here.
Yeah, I would agree with that if we can.
And he brought it to councils for, for, you know, and I, I.
I don't like him, but I'd agree to have him come back up.
I don't like you, so I'm going to put him on the spot.
I'm not sure that you have to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, I don't think.
In order to invite the councilman to address it.
Yeah.
But you certainly have the power to reopen the public hearing, if that's necessary.
No, I don't, I don't.
No.
But I don't think you need to, to invite a councilman to speak, or to let a councilman speak.
Just like when we have, you know, other people speak before and after, so.
Yes, sir.
When you brought it to council, and I know, I know how it's been brought through the process, but where we're at right here, and you understand both sides of this, you've been on the planning commission, you've changed road names probably in that tenure, trying to take, be sensitive to both sides of this as far as the name change and the nine-one-one piece of this, where, what would you be okay with, where are you really, where are you really convicted one way or another?
Let me say this, I want to, I appreciate what you guys are doing and the discussion that you're having. I sent Matthew those list of cities today because that's what I had studied, to see the name, the correct name changing. And what I found out was there's, everybody does it different. But what I've also said is this, if Nashville right down the street can have it, Dr. Martin Luther King Boulevard, why can't we? I would like for us to research that and see why we can't do that. I understand what the DR, but the DR is not on the end, it's at the beginning, and that's totally different. I mean, just like Robert stated, that his street was general, I don't see a problem with putting that DR on it. So I would like for us to see if we can do that, and if we can come back and they can't do it, I'd rather say Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
All right, let's. Yeah, so we can table it.
Let's table it for two weeks, and, I mean, and, and, well, I don't want to say that, but if everybody, maybe we.
Make a motion that that's what we're going to do.
How about we make a motion for, to defer it until our next meeting, and knowing that what we're going after there is that we all dig in a little bit, get a little bit more information on the, you know, what kind of, you know, specific, a little bit more specifics on that, and see just kind of, really how much of that is an issue, knowing that I think we all want to get to the same end result, whether it's Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. or just Martin Luther King is all we're wondering about at this point, I, I feel like at least, so. All right, so I'll make that motion to defer it.
Motion and multiple seconds. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was for item C, so for item D.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
What was the motion on, on item D?
Move for approval.
Approval, okay.
And we all.
What? Of course.
On item D, on item D, we need to do this, oh, no, no, my bad.
We did the public hearing, okay, so we had a motion, a second, we had a, all in favor, aye, and did we have any opposed? Okay, that motion passes, that was for item D. Now, we have item E.
Really? Really?
Put your paper over. Proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance regarding townhouses, the RSA zone, and other miscellaneous topics pertaining to the following sections. Section two, interpretation and definitions. Section nineteen, residential districts. Section twenty-six, off-street parking, queuing, and loading. Chart one, uses permitted by zoning district, including the chart one end notes. Chart two, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios, including chart two end notes. And chart four, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use. City of Murfreesboro Planning Department applicant, again, Mr. Blomley, and thank you for the bullet points.
All right, you are very welcome, Madam Chair, happy to, happy to accommodate. As I went over at our day meeting last time, this is really kind of a, kind of stemmed from the need to do a little bit of a cleanup to our two thousand seventeen ordinance amendment, putting the RSA type one, two, and three zoning districts in the RS six zoning district in our zoning ordinance. What we found was that there were some, some things that, once we began to administer those, those regulations, that, that really needed clarification, so we, and, and consistency, so we, so we really attempted to do that. For example, the RSA zoning district, it really is kind of a little bit murky, murky whether or not single-family detached homes are allowed across the board in all three RSA types, RSA one, two, and three. But just to, to go over these just very quickly, one of the things that we've done is we are looking to amend the definitions of townhomes and multifamily residential. Right now, townhomes actually meet the definition of multifamily residential and single-family residential attached. So what we're doing, when we created the RSA zoning district, which stands for single-family residential attached, we didn't specify in the definitions that townhomes are single-family residential attached uses, and for the purposes of, of our zoning ordinance, our townhomes are not to be considered multifamily residential uses, so, so we're trying to clarify that, that they're single-family residential attached uses, consistent with the language that we used when we adopted the two thousand seventeen zoning ordinance amendment. As I mentioned, chart one of the zoning ordinance really doesn't, it was not amended back in two thousand seventeen to really differentiate between different types of single-family attached uses, it just basically has single-family attached, which could be our, you know, for those of us who have been around here a long time, the decker and belt zero lot line homes, which are two units attached, or it could be attached townhomes of, you know, of large complexes like we're accustomed to seeing, so we really tried to split those out and include which different zoning classifications those specific uses are allowed in, staying pretty true to, to what we interpreted them to be allowed in today, so that we really weren't expanding what they could go into, just really clarifying where they could go. And it's really intended to predict more, or to create more predictability and continuity in how the various RSA zones can be developed. As I mentioned, it was a little bit unclear whether or not single-family detached uses were allowed in all three RSA zones. We've included that language specifying that, that single-family detached homes can be developed in all three different types of the RSA zoning. The chart two, the bulk regulations and the chart two end notes, back in the two thousand seventeen ordinance amendment, there was a footnote put in there for RS six, which stated that, that the exterior materials of the homes had to be of at least seventy-five percent per facade, brick, stone, or cementitious siding. And the purpose behind that was to create, to, to include building materials that were, that were less combustible to, to decrease the likelihood of fire damage to adjacent homes, since we're smaller lots, smaller side setbacks, houses closer together, and so, but we only applied that standard to the RS six zone, and so what we've done is we really looked comprehensively at the zoning ordinance to see what other zoning districts were similarly situated, and extend that provision to those other zoning districts, so that, for example, in RSA type one, which allows single-family detached homes on lots even smaller than, than the RS six zone, that that same provision would, would apply. Also, the RS six zone, a footnote was put in there that would require the minimum front garage setback of thirty-five feet in order to allow for driveways of adequate length to accommodate four vehicles. Right now, we have some zoning districts that are kind of caught at, and I will say that RS six allows a twenty-five-foot front setback for the balance of the house, the garage has to be set back thirty-five feet, so it really gives some good flexibility to developers. If they wanted to do a recessed garage, the rest of the front of the house could be, could be, have a reduced setback. But we have some zoning districts like RS eight, for example, that are kind of in a no-man's-land, they have a thirty-foot front setback. Thirty feet is not enough to stack two cars back to back, so if you tried to stack two cars, you would block the public sidewalk, and so that's what, at thirty feet, that's what you run the risk, people are going to be tempted to park two cars back to back, but they really don't have enough room on their private lot. And so what we tried to do was extend that same provision to other zoning districts like RS eight that had thirty-foot front setbacks, to allow them the flexibility of having reduced front setbacks except for the garage, to make sure that they were adequately parked. And we also proposed to modify the chart two end notes, which contain the standards for the RSA zones, we looked at those with our experience in administering them over the last four years, and how we could tweak those to, to make them more effective, and so I, I won't go over all those. There are some other miscellaneous provisions in this amendment to create consistency. So, one thing that, that we did, and I'll have to compliment Mr. McKnight, he's really big on, on reaching out to our stakeholders and, and having them be involved in the process, sent this to some of our local design community and to some of our local developers and property owners who, who, who have property that, that would be affected, and, and we got really positive feedback, and Mr. Taylor and Mr. Huddleston, Mr. Bill Huddleston, both gave us suggestions of how we could improve it, and we tried to incorporate those suggestions where we could, and I, and I think that's probably why you see, I think, no one in the audience to speak about this amendment, is because I think we got some, some buy-in from the, from the community, and really pleased with that, pleased with the feedback that we got. At any rate, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this amendment tonight, and then formulate a recommendation to the city council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Blomley. Any questions before we open the public hearing? And we will open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak. I believe Mr. Blomley stated we want to have anybody.
Rodney.
Hello, Mr. Martin? All right, we will close the public hearing. Questions, comments, and/or motions?
Motion, yeah, go ahead.
Move for approval, subject to our staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for all your hard work on that and making it really easy on our end, I know you've done a lot of work to get there, so, thank you. Any staff reports or other business?
I got some stuff I'd really like to talk to you.
I bet.
Go home and talk to your wife about it.
Stand adjourned.